All right, everybody. All right, it is 2:03 PM on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. And this is the regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. It is also Bus Driver Appreciation Day. And so now I would like to invite Clerk Rodriguez to please do roll call.
Yes, Madam President. Vice President Mayberry.
Made it.
Trustee Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
I'm here, President Smith. Trustee Westlake. Trustee Woodley.
Here.
Trustee Church.
Last but not least.
And the representative is delayed. Madam President, we have a call.
All right, thank you all so much. That closes item 1.2. So here in the Washoe County School District, we always choose the best person for the role. Sometimes, the best person is also the first person to do their job. And representation is very, very important. Because for all children and people, you have to see something in order to be something. So the person that I am talking about, who I will introduce in a moment, is our new Deputy Chief of Police. Prior to the Washoe County School District, in her time here, she was a part of the UNR Police Department. She was a sergeant supervising the patrol teams, investigators, sexual assault awareness, and much more. She also spent time with the National Judicial College. She has been with the Washoe County School District for seven years. And in that time began as a campus officer, and also worked in the areas of emergency management, training, and is also our K-9 Sergeant. Please, Deputy Chief Shawna Baker, will you please lead us in the pledge?
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And shortly, we will hear more about our new deputy chief and also some new sergeants that we have with our department. Now we will move on to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nu Mu, Northern Paiute, Niwi, Western Shoshone, and Nu Wu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. And so now, we will move on to a moment of great pride, and that is item 1.05, the school police promotion ceremony. And as Chief Tracy Moore comes up to lead us in this very exciting and important moment, I would also be remiss to not publicly recognize one of my colleagues at the dais right now, who was a champion in moments like this, and that's Clerk Rodriguez. We have a lot to celebrate in the promotion and the moving up of the members of our department that we're here to celebrate today. And we want the entire community to know that we are in full support of the Washoe County School Police Department and the outstanding officers and team members that we have within it. And today, we will be focused on three of them as we celebrate their accomplishments and what it is they contribute to our children and our community. And on that note, Chief Moore, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Smith, interim Superintendent Dr. McNeil and trustees. I appreciate for us putting Ryan Topat in and we'll get you to your busy schedule for today. But it's a pretty full room in back. If you guys are fine, maybe we can... Are you guys okay if we squish them up front? So we've got quite a few community police departments here with us, so come on in. I'll try to... If I miss one of you, I apologize. But if you guys want to come on up front, and Deputy Chief Baker, come on up here too. Oh, just up here, Chief. Just up here and support me.
You follow directions? I'm so sorry.
Well, it's tough, so let's have everybody squish here. We've got Chief Nance Reno Police, new deputy or deputy chief or assistant chief, Ollie Miller. Yeah, Carson Sheriff's Office. I got UNRPD. We've got Reno PD. You know, quite a few people in there, so got everybody's support. But let me go with the first promotion we have for you all today. Sorry, we'll squish them all in there. We got Chief James from UNR, but you'll see them all. So everybody's here to support us, and really do appreciate everybody showing up. Deputy Chief Baker, before lying roots with the Washoe County School District, Shawna served the University of Nevada Police Department as a supervisor, sergeant, patrolling patrol teams, special assignments, investigators, detectives, and police training programs, sexual assault awareness and defense, their honor guard, and served as the police academy liaison officer. In 2013, she became a faculty member with the National Judicial College and was responsible for teaching Fourth Amendment constitutional law to national and local judges. Shawna was the public relations and narcotics K-9 Sergeant for the span of her career with UNRPD. She served as an administrative sergeant until transitioning from UNRPD to Washoe County School District Police Department. During her career time with the school district, Shawna has been a field training officer, emergency management liaison, training team member, and K-9 Sergeant. And I think at this point, she's going to request that she be badged by her wife, Belinda... There you are. You know, there's in there.
Can I push the mic just for you?
Okay.
Do you have a moment?
Thank you.
You want to say something?
Absolutely. It is such an honor, as I said before, to be a part of this Washoe County School District Police Department, our entire community. It is my honor to serve continuously with our community partners, our law enforcement partners. I'm so grateful to be here and to continue the chief's mission to bring about wonderful changes that benefit our students, staff, and community. So thank you all very much.
And Chief Moore and our members of our public, we will be taking a photo after this too, so the family don't run away just yet.
Appreciate it. We'll make it quick.
Take your time.
The next promotion we have for you all, you know, is going to be what was Detective Diamond is now Sergeant Diamond. If you want to step up here, buddy. So a little story about Eric here. Eric has over 15 years of law enforcement experience. He began his career in 2008 as a reserve deputy with the Carson City Sheriff's Office before being hired as a full-time officer by the University of Nevada Reno Police Department in 2009. In 2015, Eric joined the Washoe County School District Police Department. He is a field training officer, a training team member, and is representative of the honor guard. Eric was also the first school district detective to be assigned to the regional heat unit. Before being promoted to sergeant, Eric was a detective for school police. Congratulations, Sergeant, and I believe his mom is here, Dolores, to badge him. And we told him to wear a different uniform. It's a little difficult on the tac best. We'll get about theirs. Yeah, keep moving. All right, last but not least, was Detective Cardinal. We'll have him jump up here. He's now Sergeant Cardinal. That's a common theme here. So Andrew has over 15 years of law enforcement experience also. He began his career as an officer with the University of Nevada Reno Police Department. In 2013, he joined the Washoe County School District Police Department. Andrew is a valuable member of our department. He is a field training officer, range instructor, training team member, and a police mountain bike instructor. That class, let me tell you. Andrew has also worked with the regional gang unit, and before being promoted sergeant, he was a detective for school police. One other note too, in 2021, Andrew received a life-saving medal for providing medical care to a student. And I believe you have a family here that's... I'm not quite sure who's going to...
I've got these three right here.
Three folks. Yes, he says wife Sophie, son Henry, and daughter Ivy. Where's the badge for the kids? Don't the kids get badges?
Actually, I have...
I gave them stickers for this.
There.
There you go. So that's it. A lot of movement in school police. I appreciate all the stuff you guys do to support our department. We're excited to continue to move forward with the progression of this growth in department support in your district. I'm going to let you get off to your meeting and let this troops, this C-Wall... And sorry, President Smith has her light on.
Not until after we take a photo with our newly promoted officers and then have their families come up too, so we're going to do that next. All right, we're going to give it another minute while our guests make their way. All righty, all right, we're going to go ahead and continue now that we have a good number of our guests that have left the room. And now we're going to close section one and move on now to section two, our consent agenda items. So today for consideration, we have items 2.02 to 2.23. I have not heard from any of my colleagues about pulling any of those items. I'm looking and I'm seeing no lights on at the moment. Oh, okay. Thank you very much, JJ. I appreciate the flag. So I do want to announce that staff is requesting consent agenda item 2.12 be pulled from the agenda. This item will return for consideration at a future meeting. So that means ahead of us, we have 2.02 to 2.11, and then 2.13 to 2.23. I see no lights on pulling any of those items or questions so far. So JJ, do we have public comment for item 2.02 to 2.11, and then 2.13 to 2.23?
I have none.
All right. Then I will bring it back to this body, and I am looking for a motion to approve items 2.02 to 2.11 and 2.13 to 2.23.
So move. Second.
All right, motion by trustee Woodley, seconded by Vice President Mayberry. Seeing no lights on for discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, team. And now we will close section two and move on to section three. These are our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. So we will begin with item 3.1. This is an item for presentation and discussion. It is a presentation and discussion of a Washoe County School District proclamation honoring Public School Volunteer Week. And we welcome in front of us our Chief Student and Family Supports Officer, Dr. Paul Lamarcas, and her Volunteer Services Coordinator, Nicole Vasquez.
President Smith, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity for the record, Paul Lamarcas, Chief Student and Family Supports Officer. Thank you very much for celebrating our volunteers. Volunteers are a critical component in the high-performing school district. And my role here is just simply to introduce Nicole Vasquez. I've mentioned her to you previously. Nicole herself was a volunteer in our schools. She worked in a special education classroom. She later became an aide in that classroom. She was then a bus driver transporting special education students. And now for the last two years, she's been our coordinator of volunteer services. She's done a masterful job in recruiting individuals and organizations to contribute to our efforts. And so without further ado, Nicole Vasquez.
Welcome, Ms. Vasquez.
Thank you, Paul. Good afternoon, President Smith, Dr. McNeil, and trustees. As Dr. Lamarcas has shared, I have served in several important roles throughout our Washoe County School District. In all of these roles, I have worked with volunteers, and I know firsthand the profound impact our volunteers have on our students, staff members, classrooms, and families. They play such an important role in the day-to-day workings of our district, and we cannot thank them enough for sharing their time and talents with us. And I have a video I'd like to share with you guys.
It's been a wonderful experience. I feel as though I've made a lot of impact on the kids that I volunteer with. I feel as though I've made a large impact on my own children when they see me volunteer.
It is such a special thing to get the parents of our students to come into our school, volunteer in our classrooms, and just get to know a little bit more about what Desert Heights means to the staff and students.
What's your favorite thing to learn in class?
Science.
Well, getting to be in the classroom with your kids, helping them learn, and getting to know their classmates too, and seeing how they interact with the other kids.
It helps the teacher. I also get to meet other people.
Oh gosh, yes. Please come. It's not boring. You get to do all kinds of things. You're not in one place all day long, so you get to experience the lunchroom, the playground, the hallways, the classrooms. You get to follow your child if you want to, but that's not the only thing you do.
We tell parents, like, we want you to come in the classroom. We want you to see what teachers are teaching and what teachers deal with, and realize that we could always use more hands in the classroom.
The first day that I volunteered at school, several times during the day, my son came up to me and hugged me and said, "I love you, Dad." And then when we got home and my wife asked him how his day of school was, he looked at her and with a big smile, he said, "Today was the best day of school ever." And that's when I knew I'd made the right choice to volunteer.
Make the time. Time goes by so quickly. Your kids need you. The schools need you. Teachers are doing so much, and we just need you to see what we're doing so you can really support your children and the schools.
Thank you. Joining us today is David Freeman, who is a principal at Desert Heights Elementary School. Today, he has brought one of his watchdogs, volunteers, Chris. Watchdog stands for Dads of Great Students. This is a great program because it provides our dads, uncles, grandfathers, and other male role models with an opportunity to support our students and staff members at our schools, students who might not have such a role model in their lives. And now I'd like to introduce Principal David Freeman.
Welcome, Principal Friedman.
Thank you. Excuse me. Superintendent McNeil, President Smith, Board of Trustees. My name is David Friedman, and I've been proudly serving as principal at Desert Heights for the past four years. Family engagement has been one of our pillars at our school for the past four years. If it's reimagining open house, looking at building off the funds of knowledge of our families by inviting families to talk about their culture and their profession. But one of the main areas we've looked at is looking at our volunteers. We have traditional volunteers, but we adopted the watchdog program, Dads of Great Students. And then this year, watch moms, Moms of Marvelous Students. The program came out of the National Center for Fathering, and really the mission was to bring positive male role models into the school and create a sense of safety. And where it differs from traditional volunteers, where we do have classroom moms, they might come in for an hour, do some, you know, cutting up for teachers. This program, we ask our watchdogs or watch moms to volunteer a full day. So we ask them to commit from the time students come in to the time students leave. So we want them to see the entirety of the day. We want to see what... We want them to see what their kids are learning. Typically, our watchdogs or watch moms will be in their kids' classroom for a couple blocks of the day, but then they're in other teachers' classrooms. So they get to experience our special education programs. They're in music. They're doing duty with us. They get to see everything, and they really walk away with a sense of appreciation of what our professionals in our school are doing, as well as they always want to come back and volunteer more. So I would like to introduce Mr. Warnock, Chris Warnock. He's affectionately known as Mr. W. at our school. He has done the most... Like I said, we asked dads moms to do one full day. Give me one full day. And we've been very lucky to, I think he has done close to probably 10 to 15 days at our school. And he's really more of a staff member than a watchdog. So I would like to let him talk about his experience as a watchdog at Desert Heights.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Welcome, Mr. Warnock.
Welcome. Thank you, President Smith and board members, for the opportunity to speak. I want to thank Principal Friedman for this program. What I've seen going through all these classrooms, and I've rotated through just about every class inside of Desert Heights, is educators, and I'll be blunt because I'm not an employee. Educators have a bigger burden than ever before inside their classrooms. And the issues that they face go well beyond the walls of their school. And I think this program is very important because in order to solve a problem that's occurring within the community in education, you need to involve the community. And I can count on two hands easily, students that come up to... And I can count on two hands easily, students that come up to me that I might have only had one interaction with, but continue to check in with me when they see me in the school. And I think every watchdog and watch mom has instances where a student treats you in a way that you know that you're there for them. I've seen students accidentally call watch moms and watch dads, and myself, dad or mom. And again, that just goes to show that this is not something we should only be asking our teachers to work on. We need programs like this, and I'm very grateful that our school had this program.
Thank you so much. There will be a photo later.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman, and also Mr. Warnock. Also today, joining us is Sheri Brown, the Foster Grandparent Program Coordinator. Foster grandparents are seniors who spend time in our schools, working with our students in our classrooms, on playgrounds and in activities on campus. We rely on these experienced and generous volunteers who provide such a comforting presence in our schools for students who need a little extra support during the school day. Today, I have Sheri Brown.
Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here. Thank you, President Smith, and Dr. McNeil, and all of the board members. Thank you so much for having us. And I am loving what they're doing over at High Desert. That just sounds amazing. The Foster Grandparent Program, for those of you who may not know, is a branch of the AmeriCorps Seniors. It's been a nationwide program since 1964. We've been here in northern Nevada since the late 1980s. We currently have 82 volunteers in northern Nevada. 61 of those folks are serving right here in Washoe County. The volunteers range in age from 58 to 92. And the average volunteer is 74 years old and volunteers 14 hours a week. Last year, in 2023, over 58,000 volunteer hours were served by 93 grandma and grandpas. I call it a win-win-win program. First of all, I think that the seniors get a lot out of the program. They're active physically, mentally, and they have purpose in their days. It's so good for their well-being. All the stories that they tell me, I love it. They're giving back to our community's children. A lot of times, they're learning right along with the kids. They come in and tell me, "I forgot about this in school, but now I'm learning about this." And the kids benefit from the additional one-on-one support, the wisdom and the loving and caring, and, you know, an intergenerational relationship that a lot of them may not have in their own families. And then I think that the school and the staff also benefit. It took me a long time to realize that, longer than I'd like to admit. But I just heard stories from schools, from the teachers coming forward and telling me how their grandma or their grandpa was pretty much their cheerleader throughout the school year. You know, "Come on, we can do it. We're almost through the school year. You got this." And so when they become part of the school culture and the fabric and the family of a school, I think everybody's winning. And our motto is, "Share today, shape tomorrow." And I think that's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like Grandma Dee, which is also Dolores, to share a few words. She is 92 years old. She's been volunteering for 22 years, and she goes faithfully to veterans four days a week.
Welcome, Grandma Dee.
I love being a foster grandparent. We need so many more. These little children, it's just so sad. I have children up to the fifth grade now. The boys are kind of hanging back. But Grandma Dee, we need a hug today. And one little boy, he comes up to me. We had, I had him in the third grade. Now he's in the fifth. Now, what's your favorite word? Jumbo. He told, he taught me that word. And I said, every time, Grandma Dee, I have to have a hug, then we go jumbo. And then, this has been a couple months ago, this little girl, Emily. She comes up to me. She says, Grandma, she's in the fifth grade. Grandma Dee, I got to have my hug this morning. I said, "Okay, Emily." The next day, her life was taken away. She was in a car wreck. It was on TV. But all these little kids, I have one little girl. I had this class in the third, fourth, and fifth and sixth grade, and we did the Buffalo Soldiers. And we was on TV, Channel 4, with Joe Hart for several, several years, it seems like. Now she's in LA, teaching ballet. She just got married. She goes on cruises and teaches the cruises. And she came two years ago to see me, the only day I miss of school. Then I have a little boy came about seven years ago, bought me a dozen red roses. They said, Grandma Dee, we want you in the office. And I thought, what did I do? Here was Victor with roses. Now I have his niece in the third grade. So it's, we need more foster grandparents. And these kids, every day, come up, Grandma Dee, Grandma Dee, we need a hug. The boys are kind of hanging back in the fifth grade, but everybody needs a hug. And the teachers are overwhelmed. I'm almost overwhelmed. Every day, it's so, times have changed. Twenty-seven years ago, when I started this program, it was so easy. One little boy, he knew his timetables in, I think, six weeks, except the 12s. Now, some of the kids can't tell time. It's, and the teachers are overwhelmed. We need more foster grandparents. This is a great program. I also won a trip to Washington, DC.
Thank you.
I went to the Rapskalian, and Joe Hart was there, and Chad O'Sorino, President Wells Fargo. And there's 11 other people besides me, and I thought, I'm in with this group of people. How am I gonna win this? Guess who won? I won the trip to Washington, DC.
You go, Grandma Dee. You go.
We thank all of our volunteers who serve in our classrooms, lunchrooms, offices, playgrounds, and everywhere they are needed every day. We rely on them for so much, and we are grateful for their help and support. And I thank all the volunteers that come through Volunteer Services every day because you are so much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we move on to the reading of the proclamation, and we will also take a photo with those that we're honoring today. I just want to say a few words, and then I will go to Vice President Mayberry. So I first learned about the Foster Grandparents Program through visiting my schools and seeing the grandparents in the classroom, and the love, the outpouring of love that I saw. And then I was able to participate in a luncheon, the annual celebration, last year, along with many colleagues. And I was absolutely blown away by the number of hours that are spent dedicated in our schools. And I knew the value of the program, but I really saw the full power of it when I was there in that room. And I would also like to bring attention to our watchdogs and our watch moms because when we say that our promise includes in partnership with our families and communities, this is how we deliver on that. Because parents have a place in our schools, in our classrooms, in lifting up all the children within their community. And I just think it's remarkable what it is that you've done, and I do believe that you are a model of what can be achieved when we involve parents in our classrooms. So thank you. And before Dr. McNeil reads the proclamation, I'm gonna go to Vice, are you sure? Okay. All right. Well, then we will go to the proclamation. I'm so sorry. Trustee Westlake.
Sorry. Thank you, President Smith. Sorry, Superintendent McNeil, but I just, I have to add in on the foster grandparents. On my visit last week at Lena Juniper, Principal Poulsen honored me with touring around with four of the foster grandmas. And I want to tell you, I fell in love with those grandmas after about 20 minutes. And the kids adore them. They're supporting the teachers. They're helping get things prepared for the teachers. They're in the classroom. They're giving hugs. They're working with students one-on-one or in a small group while the teacher is teaching the other kids. It's amazing what can be accomplished with other individuals that give of their time, give of their love, and give commitment to our kids in our community. It is a wonderful, wonderful program. Those women are amazing, and when I grow up and fulfill my trustee responsibilities, I am going to be a foster grandma. It's an amazing program. Thank you. Thank you so much, Trustee Westlake. That's very kind of you. All right, and here is the proclamation. Whereas National Public School Volunteer Week provides an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the hard work and dedication of volunteers who give their time and resources to support public schools. And whereas thousands of volunteers are spending innumerable hours serving schools throughout Washoe County as chaperones, mentors, after-school tutors, club leaders, booster club members, PTA and PTO members, guest speakers, classroom helpers, athletic coaches, and in other countless ways. And whereas volunteers from the community who work with our students and in our schools are critical to the success of the goals of the district's strategic plan. And whereas volunteers become role models for our students and help to build social and emotional skills such as self-confidence and self-esteem, as well as enrich learning experiences beyond what is normally available to students. And whereas volunteers are an integral part of student learning and play an important role in the education of students and provide a valuable partnership link with our community. Whereas we applaud the efforts and dedication of the Washoe County Foster Grandparents Program and Desert Heights Elementary School Watchdog Program for our students and schools as representatives of volunteers throughout the Washoe County School District. Now therefore, I, Kristin McNeil, Interim Superintendent of the Washoe County School District, dear, here, I proclaim, April 22nd through 26th, 2024, as Public School Volunteer Week in the Washoe County School District, and call upon all of our parents, guardians, and community members to find ways to volunteer their time and talents in the support of our public schools. I feel like I need the gavel for this.
All right, everyone. That closes item 3.01. And now moves on to item 3.02. This is an item for possible action. This is the discussion and possible action for the Board of Trustees to waive the requirements of Board Policy 7110, Naming of Schools and Other District Facilities, and approve the renaming of the baseball fields at Demone Ranch High School in honor of baseball coach and legend, John Poulsen. And we welcome up Associate Chief Melinda Baker.
Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent McNeil, and esteemed board. I am Melinda Baker, Associate Chief that supports Area 5, which includes Demone Ranch High School. And we are here today with the rare and distinguished request to rename one of our Washoe County School District fields after an educator and athletic champion whose sphere of influence has permeated our learning community. And here to bring that request forward is the Demone Ranch High School Principal, Darrell Bell.
Welcome, Principal Bell. Thank you for being here.
Of course. Thank you. Members of the Board of Trustees and Interim Superintendent, Dr. McNeil. I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak before you today. And on behalf of our Demone Ranch Mustang family, we humbly request you to consider allowing us to name our Mustang baseball field after retired head coach, John Poulsen. Twenty years ago, when we opened our doors for the very first time at Demone Ranch High School, our first principal, Serena Robb, hired Mr. John Poulsen to teach social studies, and he was hired as our first head baseball coach. Coach Poulsen was given the unique opportunity to build a baseball program at a brand-new high school from the ground up. For 20 years, Coach Poulsen poured his love, passion, sweat, and I'm sure a few tears in building the baseball facilities that exist today. Working with many of our community partners over the years, throughout the Reno, throughout the greater Reno Sparks area, he was able to build a baseball facility that well over thousands of our athletes over 20 years have had the opportunity to participate on, to develop their skills on, to compete on. Coach Poulsen will be the first one to tell you that it was not all him, and it was our amazing Mustang community that helped make it all happen. But I'm here to tell you, without Coach Poulsen and his partnership with our community and his connections with our community, it would not have happened. For 20 years, Coach Poulsen positively impacted the lives of so many young athletes, guiding them to becoming more than just great baseball players, but also great human beings. Coach Poulsen focused on teaching his athletes the importance of academics, professionalism, honesty, integrity. Although many of his athletes went on to compete at the collegiate level, most of his athletes would walk away with values and principles that would help them well beyond the game of baseball. Over the course of 20 years, Coach John Poulsen developed a profound respect among many of the great coaches throughout the state of Nevada. Coach Poulsen was named one of the Northern Nevada's most winningest coaches in large-class state history, ranking in the top 10 in the state. Coach Poulsen has been named Northern Nevada Baseball Coach of the Year multiple times, and he was awarded the NIAA Model Coach of the Year. Naming the Demone Ranch baseball field after Coach John Poulsen would not only be a fitting tribute to his outstanding contributions and legacy, but also serve as a reminder of the values and the principles that were instilled in everyone that had the privilege of working with him over 20 years. I wholeheartedly believe that naming the baseball field after Coach John Poulsen would not only honor his remarkable achievements, but also serve as a source of inspiration and motivation for current as well as future generations of athletes. If approval is granted, we plan to have a sign created to be mounted on our scoreboard that reads, "John Poulsen Field." We would also schedule for a ribbon-cutting ceremony to reveal the new sign, inviting all of you, of course, our trustees, Interim Superintendent, Dr. McNeil, and hopefully our new superintendent, of course, Coach Poulsen's family, our staff, and as well as our community partners. Again, I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present to you this request, and we strongly appreciate your consideration. And if I may, I just would like to recognize retired coach, John Poulsen, and of course, his wife, Principal Kim Poulsen, who's also here today. his wife, Principal Kim Poulsen, who's also here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Bell. All right, seeing no lights on, JJ, do we have public comment on this item?
The board received emails from Rick Ravelio, Jason Rogers, and Tim McCarty.
Thank you. Well, Coach Poulsen, we are so honored by the work that you have done. You are absolutely legendary, I meant what I said, and this could be an incredible moment for a legacy for you and your family. And on that note, I will look for a motion. Vice President Mayberry.
Thank you, Madam President. Given that Demone Ranch is a fantastic district, district F, I'd be honored to make the motion. Thank you for coming forward, and congratulations, and thank you for your service to our students and all you've done over the last 20-plus years, John. Thank you. The Board of Trustees, I move that the Board of Trustees approves the naming of the baseball field at Demone Ranch High School in honor of Coach John Poulsen.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry. We have a second by Trustee Westlake. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, you're a part of Washoe County history, Coach Poulsen. Thank you so much. All right, so that closes item 3.02. And if you guys want to leave, you're more than welcome to. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we'll go ahead now and we'll move on to item 3.03. This is the presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to take a photo. Are we taking, we're taking a photo. I'm sorry, we've taken so many photos. I'm so sorry, we're going to do that next. All right, everybody. All right, that closes item 3.02, and we move on now to item 3.03. This is for presentation and discussion only. This is the update regarding the superintendent search for the Washoe County School District by McPherson and Jacobson. And today with us, we welcome Dr. Walt Cooper of McPherson and Jacobson, Dr. Steve Joel of McPherson and Jacobson, and we also have Michelle Anderson, our Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, and Katie Louise, we're our interim chief talent officer. So just as a note to my board and also to the community, we will of course be going through this, this presentation. This is not a discussion of the candidates, and to be clear, the candidates have not been noticed per NRS. So while we will be presenting them and we'll be talking about them, we're not engaging in discussion, and nor have we noticed them on any of the things traditionally that we would per those NRS. That's different, of course, than the special meeting we're going to have later this week and any potential future meetings where we actually discuss them as candidates and potentially make decisions. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone is clear on that. And now I will open it up to our wonderful team.
Well, good afternoon. It's great to see everybody again. And before I start, we start out with our formal comments. I just want to congratulate you on how you start your meetings. This is just a great way to get off on the right foot, and as you've discovered, you got wonderful teachers, you got wonderful students, you got wonderful parents, you got wonderful community support, and that manifests itself in so many different ways. But the two or three meetings that I've been here, you always start this way, and I have to tell you, having been in a lot of boardrooms in large districts, I give you an A+. So keep doing that, it's such a great tone. So we are absolutely thrilled to be here today because it means that we've gotten to that point where we're going to, we have presented to your public and to you, the candidates that have risen to the top. But I wanted to make some intro comments just about the search and a couple of other things, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Cooper, and then we've got a full agenda. So this is, this is the culmination of a lot of work. As you know, because we've hopefully said it from the time we started working with you, all searches are complex, and this certainly has complexity to it as well. And, you know, we were having lunch today down by the river, and we both said to ourselves, why wouldn't everybody want to come to Washoe? Well, the truth of the matter is, you know, we used to get 80 applicants for jobs like these in the past, and now we don't, right? Because the talent pool really has somewhat evaporated and aged out. But there were a couple of, couple of challenges that we had to overcome, and, you know, Dr. Cooper and I spent a lot of time on the phone recruiting people who we thought had met your criteria. But, but there's a few questions that always came up, and I think it's just really important that your public understand that where you are today is really a precedent-setting position because the goal is now to bring in a superintendent, name a superintendent that's going to be with you for a long time, with the idea that that's what's going to move the needle ultimately for your children and your parents and your community. And we approach the recruiting and the vetting and the interviewing of candidates from that standpoint. But the number of superintendents that you had in a short period of time certainly weighed heavy on a lot of folks' minds, and some superintendents would say to me, do you really think I can be the one that's going to reverse that trend, and should I give up a Happyville, USA position that I have right now for that chance? And of course, you might not want that kind of a person anyway in the candidate pool. The conversation that we had about internal candidates and your interest in making sure, and Dr. Nicolet, I've used this quote over and over and over again, you may not even remember it, you want an owner, not a renter, to be here. Some candidates that we spoke with took that as if we're not internal, we're not going to be considered. And Dr. Cooper and I had to work through that with a lot of candidates. But at the end of the day, we said, watch the board meetings, do your research. This is a Board of Trustees that's very interested in bringing in the best talented individual that they can, and then setting that course for excellence in the future. And then we just had a lot of conversations in your community with a lot of folks, and you need to know, and I think you do, that you do enjoy majority support in this community of the people who, who have opinions, let's put it that way. And I know sometimes you hear the different, you hear the different side of that, but the folks that we interacted with that were referred to us as people who would be opinion leaders think very, very highly of Washoe. So from that standpoint, we were able then to, to really start building that candidate pool, and Dr. Cooper will describe it in a little bit greater depth. But I want to show, we want to put a shout out to President Smith. She's been the point of contact for this from day one, been awesome to work with, appreciate so much the, the structure, the organization, the timeline. This has been a search like no other, and, and I say that not out of deference to it being weird or difficult or challenging, it's just that every search is unique. But we had a lot of structure in our search. We had, we had good timelines, we had good deadlines, and Dr. Cooper and I always felt like we knew exactly where we were going to get, and we appreciate your leadership so much, President Smith. Also want to call out the staff in addition to President Smith, because there's a couple of things that, you know, again, the public needs to know. This has probably been one of the most transparent and enhanced communicative searches that I've ever been a part of, and I've done a lot of urban searches. Katie Louise, Kate, Michelle, and of course, President Smith. What your public found out, when they found out at the same time that you did who the five candidates were, that's, that's been unprecedented, and your community has to be, should be grateful for that and thankful for that. And so you come into this with an open mind, but the communication, the back and forth that we've had, and what you're going to see in a few minutes, the structure of this interview event or series of events is unlike any other. And so when you're finished at the end of this week with your formal interviews, your candidates will have had opportunities to learn about you, learn about the district, learn about the community, I mean, and honestly get a great feel for, you know, who you are and what it is that you intend to do. And it's our hope as recruiters and superintendent searchers that every single one of them leaves Friday wanting this job in the worst way. And as much as you might not want to hear this, because a lot of times we'll do searches and they'll say, just give us the one person that really can do this, we, we hope it's a difficult decision for you, and we think it will, because we think we've, we've brought you five high-quality candidates. So I just want to say thank you to the staff, I want to say thank you to President Smith, want to say thank you to the entire community that has worked with us every step of the way. This has been a joy for us, and we're looking for a successful culmination in early in May. So, Dr. Cooper?
Thank you, Dr. Joel, and hello, trustees. Welcome again. You're probably about now really getting tired of seeing my face behind this table, but it's, you know, it's okay. So did my mother. So I'm going to, I'm going to move the slide here a little bit. I've just got a couple of slides before we get to the real meet of today, which is our call, our, our team members from the district. But you've seen this slide before, but I want to put it just as a very quick reminder, and mostly a reminder to the community at large, and maybe those who are listening or watching, that the information regarding all finalists that was released on the 15th, but is still available on the website, it includes the applicant photo, little bio caption, their resume, their cover letter, the narrative response, and I would really encourage folks to read the narrative response if, if they're interested, because that is one of the things in a McPherson-Jacobson search we always do is require the candidates to speak directly to the criteria that you all identified that we put together, together when we were way here way back the first week of February. And so if you remember when we worked through that Phase 1 meeting and said, this will keep recircling, this will drive the rubric, this will drive the questions, this will drive, this will drive, this will drive, that's the perfect example of that, and that's posted there as well. And then there are two video responses, responses to two video questions that the candidates put together, and so we would really encourage everyone, whether you're a decision-maker or in this process or not, to review this information that, that is still out there on the WCSD website, and there's the link to the superintendent search on your website is front and center, so it's very easy to navigate and to get there. So let's talk about the finalist selection process a little bit, that now that we're on the, last time I was here, we were on the front end of that, and I was very purposely a little more vague than I will be today in terms of some numbers and some processes. But now that we're on the, the backside of this, we had 32 applicants. Those 32 applicants represented 13 different states. And from those 32 candidates, where we started with initial paper screening and aligning criteria and interviews, we identified 11, 11 candidates, semifinal candidates, if you will, but 11 candidates that we continued to engage and evaluate as we worked toward our end goal, that was about the last two weeks or so, leading up to the finalist announcement. And as we, as we evaluated and vetted those 11 candidates, we ultimately landed on six candidates that were what we call above the line, from, moved up above the line, from which we then met our charge to you, from you to forward five candidates. So since our initial release on April 15th, which was a date we had really hoped to hit because that was our deadline, and we hit it, but since that initial release, as you're well aware, we had an out-of-state candidate withdraw from consideration, which really is not uncommon in, in these large district nationwide searches. And our initial plan, as we had talked with some of you before, prior to identifying those candidates who were, were above the line, was if this happened, if we had a candidate withdraw in the, in the process at some point, we would only proceed with those candidates remaining, those, those initial finalists remaining. However, the timing of the candidate withdrawal and the fact that we had a candidate above the line remaining, and there were no travel or other logistical considerations as part of this, Dr. Joel and I reconvened, and we decided it would be best to invite the remaining candidate for the position, if they were interested, to also compete for the position. And that's how we, that's, so we did that, and that's how we maintained the, the slate of five. So you still have five active finalists in front of you. Four, four of those finalists were initially announced on the 15th, and then one finalist was the, an above-the-line candidate that we replaced at the, at the end of that. So, oops, sorry about that. So as you, as you look at the bullets up there, as we got down to the final selections, so all the way through, starting with the 32, we looked at the 19 characteristics that we had on the chart, all 19, that also populate the, the candidate rubric. But if you recall the activity that we did at the end of the day before we left on the 2nd, we had you do the sticky notes, and we put the sticky notes on the chart, and then we collapsed those into a narrative. So the six criteria that rose to the top with you all were the six that were up there. So ultimately, as we, if you think about a funnel, right, we started with 32 at the top of the funnel, and as we narrowed, we started whittling down the criteria that were the most important. We didn't select the top-line candidates off of 19 varying criteria, they had gotten to that point from there. We really placed our emphasis on the six. That said, not all, not every candidate checks every box, and each candidate will have different strengths on each of these, but this is where we really focused our energy in the last half a dozen days or so of the search, especially as we started, you know, very narrow delineators among, among candidates. So one of the, and last thing I will say is one of the commonalities across all of the candidates that we'll, we'll put up here in just a minute. In addition to sort of the, the varying measures on these and all of the other criteria, one of the things that all the candidates have in common is top systems-level leadership. And by that, I mean if they have not performed the duty of superintendent, either aren't currently or have not performed the duties of superintendent, they've had top-level systems leadership. And when I say top systems level, I mean basically like one report removed, if you will, right, from the superintendency. And the reason I highlight that is, Steve and I have talked about this a number of times, and it was, it was very evident in, in this search, like it is in, in many very competitive searches, the difference between the candidate responses and the candidate evaluations and the, the candidate ratings or rankings, if you will, or competencies between those who have served in top-level leadership and those who have served maybe even just below top-level leadership is demonstrative. It, it's really, really significant. And that doesn't mean that those folks aren't really high-caliber, high-caliber leaders, very proficient at what they do, and, and at some point, when given the opportunity to serve at top-level leadership, my guess is we're going to see them in other searches down the road, and they will be very, very competitive. But there really is no, to sum it up, it, it's pretty significant, it's pretty evident to us, there's really no substitution for actually having experienced that top-line leadership, that top-level leadership in an organization, systems-wide leadership in an organization. So with that, I will go to the next slide, which I don't know why I- So with that, I will go to the next slide, which I don't know why it looks like that. Should be all on there, but, oh, there we go. I didn't click enough times. So here are your five finalists listed in alphabetical order, and their cities of current residence. We have Mr. Joe Ernst from Sparks here, who you are all very familiar with, Mr. Ernst. We have Dr. Elizabeth Fagan from Humboldt, Texas. Dr. Paul LaMarco, also an internal candidate here from Washoe, who was at the podium earlier. Dr. Charles McNulty lives in Little Rock, is actually in the Pulaski School District north of Little Rock, and Dr. Troy Parks, Chief Academic Officer here in Washoe. And so I will turn the microphone back over to Dr. Joel. If I can figure this out. There we go. And then we'll move to the rest of our team.
Yes. Do you have any questions? Yeah, we would open it up if there's any questions that you have on any of the candidates. Pretty much believe they're an open book. You've got all the information that we have right now, and you've got, they're going to get a great sense for you, you're going to get a great sense for them next three or four days.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the information. I think that we're going to have a very intimate opportunity to meet these individuals starting tomorrow morning, so I think that'll be the best time for us to ask our questions. Thank you.
Given that, we'll turn it over to the team then to talk about what the next two days look like.
It's like magic. Michelle Anderson, Chief Communications, Community Engagement Officer. So most of you, hopefully everybody in this room, has received some of our communications efforts. As Dr. Cooper mentioned, we have the school district's website. You can do washeschools.net/superintendentsearch. You can click on the front page of a button. You can click on the rotating slide. We want to make sure everybody can see that. That landing page has all the information about each finalist, as was previously mentioned. And then we have details on our community meeting, which is this Thursday, how to submit questions in advance, an update on the search process, and any previous board actions that have taken place. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on that in just a few minutes. And then on April 15th, as we mentioned, we made the announcement of finalists and information about, kind of the first tease about our April 25th community meeting. That message went out to our staff families and our district community partners, news release to our media partners, and shared on our district's social media channels. And then, as we mentioned yesterday, we had the change in the finalists, so that is not up on the screen, but meeting, including how to submit questions, the live stream, that you can find that on that superintendent search page. And there's a map of the event for the 25th, and again, I'll go to details in just a moment. For anybody who's watching, and if you're not able to attend the community meeting, you are urged to send your questions and submit it to WCSD underscore communications at washeschools.net. The deadline is to submit those by 5:00 PM on April 24th. Of course, that's the day before the event, so that we're able to grab all those questions, bring it to the event. And next slide, please.
Michelle, before we move on, I'm going to go to Vice President Mayberry quickly.
Thank you, Madam President. The event at Wooster on Thursday.
Yeah, it's the next slide that I'm going to go into detail on.
Okay, you know what? Thank you. We'll see if you answer my question.
I bet you I do. So the event at Wooster High School is April 25th from 5:00, we're saying until approximately 8:15. Wooster is located, for those that don't know, 1331 East Plum Lane. Students, families, employees, community members, business leaders and media will have the opportunity to meet and ask questions of each candidate. On the website, we again have the map of the venue, and then my amazing team from communications will be there, helping to guide people. They'll be handing out maps. There's going to be a schedule so that an individual can look at the schedule, see where exactly that finalist is, and follow that finalist, or they can stay in that room. Each, we also, that night are going to be releasing a feedback survey, which you guys had all said you would like. So that feedback survey will be open that night. We'll have a QR code that's on one of our handouts, so people can snap that picture and give feedback right there as they're watching, if they'd like. We're going to have comment cards in each room. We have interpreters that are going to be in our community member room, in our room for families. Next slide, please. And then we have a moderator assigned to each forum, each room. The moderator will rotate between questions that were submitted in advance and questions that were submitted on comment cards, because we know that not everyone's going to be able to be at the event, and we want to make sure that we're allowing as many community members to ask their questions. I said this last time, and I see some familiar faces in the audience, and they can attest to, we don't go through any questions and take anything out. What the community asks is what we ask to the candidates. And we, like I said, we rotate through. The reason why we have a moderator too is we want to be mindful of everyone's time, and we want our communities and our families and all of those stakeholders to have as many questions answered at that time. So that helps us move things along instead of moving a microphone, having people shout out. Each candidate will have 30 minutes to meet with each of the groups. We have human resource representatives that will be walking the candidates to each room to make sure we stay on time. And again, for those who are unable to attend, we have a live stream of the community room that will be available at washeschools.net/superintendentsearch.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, I think you generally answered my question. Just a little drill down, because I recall last time, we had some rooms, like for instance, we had a room that was just for students. We had a room for staff, namely, I don't recall the other three words. It's very same, same format?
That is correct. We have a student voice room, and we have an employee room. We will have families and a community. The student voice room will be left to just students, because we want them to be able to speak freely with the candidates and ask the questions. Same thing with staff. We want to make sure that staff is able to ask their questions. And so the community members will have a chance to be in the community room. Some of them, as we know, are also families, so they can pick whichever room that they would like.
And on that note, although she's not with us at the moment, I can confirm that our student representative on the board, Arabelle Deason, is very involved in this process and is leading among her peers for the student voice portion. And then I'll also mention that it will be recorded, so that anyone can watch this afterwards if you happen to miss one or all of them or would like to review. So all of those sessions will be available and posted too.
The community one, yes. So it's livestreamed, and then that recording, it lives on YouTube. We'll have a link on the superintendent's page. And then, next slide, please.
Just one second. I wanted to add one quick point of clarification for you, Vice President Mayberry, and that is that last time, we had another rotation during this event, and that was the leadership team rotation. When we got feedback from the superintendent finalist candidates from last time on how the process went, five rooms and a break room was a lot. So we moved that leadership team time to earlier in their schedule for their, for their day, which I'll speak to when I get to my slide. So you won't see it on communication for the community event, because we moved it to a different time, just to make it a little shorter. That way, the community doesn't have to stay as long, students, staff, all of that. We moved that to a separate time in the superintendent finalist schedule. Okay, sorry, Michelle.
No, thank you. And then lastly, we talked about feedback. So you all, as trustees, voted to make sure that this opened up the day of the event and closes on May the 3rd. And so that night, again, we will release that QR code and that link on the webpage. But again, we don't, we know that there's people that aren't going to attend, so the following day after the community meeting, we will again send this information out to our staff, families, district community, media partners, and social media channels, so people will have that opportunity to weigh in on that survey. And that stays open through May the 3rd, as Dr. Cooper has mentioned previously, and then they will provide us the report on May 8th. And when May 8th comes, we will do the exact same thing, notifying and posting that feedback form on our website. Thank you.
Okay, just a few quick notes. I feel I've been joking this week that it feels as though I planned a wedding. There's a lot of events. The family is arriving. We have finalists landing today, and we'll be picking them up from the airport, so I'm very excited about this week. Just wanted to highlight a few more additional events that our finalists will participate in. The first is the school visits. So they will visit at least two schools with members of our leadership team, as well as their human resources liaison. They will have meals with the trustees, so we are going to make sure they're well-fed when they leave here with us. But they will have meals with all of you, and I detailed and provided those schedules for you. All for our two external candidates, they also have the opportunity to engage in a neighborhood tour, if they'd like, where we can drive them through different neighborhoods, kind of harkening back to trustee Nicoletts and all of your concern about they want, we want owners, not renters. So we've kind of started that process with them while we're not Realtors. We will talk a little bit about some of the unique characteristics of many of the neighborhoods. And then they'll also have an opportunity, as they engage with HR liaisons as well as leadership team, on the schedule, I made sure that they're engaging with people who live in all different parts of the district. So as they talk with people, they can talk to them about where they live. I made sure everybody lived all around, so that will help. And then we also have a business community welcome reception that they will be a part of as well. So all sorts of wonderful events to really give them a taste of all the wonderful things that our school district has to offer, and I'm excited to kick it off. It somewhat officially kicks off today as our external candidates fly in this evening, and then officially tomorrow morning with breakfast. Last but not least, we do have our finalist interviews with all of you that will take place on Friday morning. They are not in alphabetical order because they are based upon flight schedules for our external candidates. So we want to make sure that they aren't feeling stressed about potentially rushing to the airport or feeling like they didn't have their full time. So I did base their schedule for the day based upon when they fly out, and then we will have our three internal candidates after that. And then we did build in a break for lunch in the middle there, so we'll meet a few of the candidates, then we will break for lunch, and then we will come back for the final two candidates this Friday in this very room.
Thank you so much. A few things. So first, I'll start with a question. We will stay flexible on that day, because if one time period is a little bit shorter, we will have the candidates ready and on deck. If it doesn't, if it's a little bit sooner than these items, right, or this timeline?
Yes, so we will have essentially a reception space back in HR, so that way the finalists prior to coming into the room for their interview will be able to sit, catch their breath, have a snack, have a little caffeine if they need it. So we'll be ready. So if they are an external candidate and they're being picked up by an HR liaison, they'll be picked up in plenty of time, that if, for whatever reason, the interview prior to that ends early, then we will be able to bring them in. So they will be ready to go, same with lunch. So we're not holding tight to that 1:00 time, but we will hold tight to a 30-minute time. So we'll put that in the middle there. That way, we can make sure that the next candidate is ready to go within that lunch point. But yes, we will be flexible within that time, and our structure will really largely depend upon the responses of the candidates as you all ask your questions. And I think Steve spoke to that a little bit last week. Should he speak to that a little bit more again, the structure?
Sure, that's why I slid the microphone over, just as a reminder. And I've talked with all of you in the last week regarding your questions, which were great, by the way. That's why we didn't have to talk several times, so thank you for that. But the process will be, I will bring with me Friday, you will have a copy of the full characteristics, identified characteristics as they were on the rubric. You will have a copy of the question script. You will see everyone's questions, so you could, not just yours, so you can follow along. President Smith will make the introduction. Candidates are aware that they will have the opportunity to make a few-minute introduction and also a few-minute closing, both on President Smith's prompt. I've asked candidates to keep those to three minutes, although we will not start the clock down, the timer for those introductory and closing comments for the candidates, so that may ebb or flow a little bit. And then we will run the clock for four minutes, for, that will bookend both the asking and the answering of the questions. And we're going to start the questioning with trustee Nicolet. We're going to move around the dais. We're going to then go in reverse order, so trustee Westlake will ask two questions in a row, and we'll go back the other way. Candidates know that they will be limited to four minutes. They know that they'll be able to see a timer, and it's their responsibility to pace themselves, not yours. So in addition to that, you will have in that packet, that will have the question script and the identified characteristics, you will have in interview order, a copy of their resume directly from the website. So you won't, if you choose not to try to navigate electronic resources in the packet in front of you, you'll have their resume, but that will be the sum total of what I will present to you. I will bring those with me on Friday morning when we come for the interviews.
Thank you so much. So that's where I'm going to stay for right now, is a thank you. So to our district team, the amazing group and points of contact that have brought us to this point, so Ms. Katie Louise Weir, Ms. Michelle Anderson, our chief legal counsel, Neil Rimbardo, and the number of team members behind this, to Dr. Joel, Dr. Cooper. We are very, very grateful as a board and as a district and as a community, and to my colleagues who have done an incredible amount of work in the background. We've been training, we've been doing one-on-one sessions, and we are ready for this. So I want to say thank you so very much for bringing us to this moment, and now allowing this to be something that we bring everyone into, into this process as well. I do also want to share with my colleagues that we did talk about offering optional balanced governance sessions to all the candidates that were interested in them, and I am very pleased to share that every single one of our finalists did take advantage of that. As a reminder, those sessions are confidential, but every single one did occur. So I want to say thank you so much for that. And then lastly, unless anyone has anything else to say, I want to make sure that I emphasize that this is a mutual decision between the school district and a candidate, because we're not just hiring for a job, we are welcoming a leader into Washoe County. And so this is a mutual decision that is incredibly important in this process. And so I want to preemptively thank all the parents and community members who are giving of their time and their talent to help us make this decision. So thank you to everyone, and thank you to all of our finalists who have put themselves forward to something that is truly vulnerable and very important, and so we look forward to honoring them over these next several days. All right, seeing no other lights on, I think we're ready to go. All right. Thank you all so much. Okay, that closes item 3.03, and now we will move on to item 3.04. This is the presentation and discussion of the Bailey Charter Elementary School Annual Monitoring Follow-Up Report related to the four areas of noncompliance pertaining to fiscal management. This is an item for presentation and discussion only, and we welcome our chief internal auditor, Kirk Starkey.
Good afternoon, President Smith, trustees, and interim Superintendent McNeil. Kirk Starkey, chief internal auditor, for the record. At the February 27, 2024 regular meeting of the board, the annual performance monitoring reports for the various charter schools were presented, and this included the report for Bailey Charter Elementary School. The annual performance report for Bailey noted four areas of noncompliance related to its general accounting practices and fiscal management that arose from their annual financial statement audit. The areas of deficiency were noted as being a lack of board of directors oversight, inadequate expenditure substantiation, inadequate disclosure of potential conflicts of interest, and segregation of duties issues. At that February meeting, the board requested our office follow-up on the sufficiency of the corrective actions taken by the school and to report back at an April meeting. A copy of our follow-up report is attached as part of your packet, and I'm happy to go through any item individually, just let me know. But overall, in the big picture, even though all the findings cannot be considered fully corrected at this time, our opinion would be that the school has taken significant steps in remedying the deficiencies. Specifically, they have fully implemented the one item by establishing the finance committee that was requested, and they've held two meetings thus far. The other three items, though, are considered, we consider them partially remediated, because the school's newly crafted financial policies are still in draft form, and they would still need to go through that finance committee and go through their board before they're being adopted. So at this time, I can't, we can't consider these, those three items fully corrected. The school has a finance committee meeting planned in May and a board meeting thereafter. Please note that shortly after this timeframe, Please note that shortly after this timeframe is the school's fiscal year end, which is like ours, June 30. After that, the school's financial statements will again be audited by its outside CPAs, and a report will be issued probably around November. And after that time, our office will get that report and evaluate at that, at that point in time on these items. Thank you. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have. Just as a heads, heads up, unfortunately, the school's principal cannot be here, here this evening. She's ill. But I can take any questions if you have them directly for her, and, and I can get back to you. But thank you.
So question, the Bailey Academy, it's a fairly small school.
Correct.
K through six or something?
I think so.
Something, I think so. Just, who made the decision to require them to have a finance committee? How was that come about?
It was basically, the CPAs were asking for more involvement with the board of, their board of directors basically two years ago because the whole board had basically, they had trouble meeting quorums and couldn't show up for one reason or another. So they basically went one year without having board meetings. So the CPAs wanted not only a new board constituted, but at the same time, they wanted a finance committee with someone with finance knowledge to help them out because there were, there were other financial issues a couple of years ago. That's basically the genesis.
That basically, because it occurred to me that we don't have, here we are, billion dollar, over a billion dollar budget. We don't have a finance committee, and yet we're requiring them to. So, but that's because their board didn't meet on a regular basis.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, seeing no lights. Thank you so much. Mr. Starkey, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to go ahead now and close item 3.04 and move on now to item 3.05. Just as a note to my board, we will take a break after this item, okay? And so now we will open up item 3.05, Presentation and Discussion Regarding the Process Used to Determine the Washoe County School District Allocation Process, Which Is Defined as the Number of Budgeted Teacher and Support Staff Positions at Individual Schools Based on the Enrollment of the School. This is an item for presentation and discussion. And with us, we welcome our budget director, Jeff Bozo, and our associate chief and lead associate chief, Tiffany McMaster. And now, before you do get started, I would like to recognize the two trustees who asked for this conversation today, led by trustee Nicolet and also trustee Woodley. So thank you so much, and if you do have any questions, I will be deferring to both of you for first position with that. Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. So today, we're here to give an overview of the district's allocation process. We'll start with a summary, high-level summary of the allocation process, and then jump into a little more detail as far as projected enrollment, preliminary allocations, the adjustments we make in the summer ahead of the school year, and then the famous count day when we set allocations to actual enrollment. And then we'll finish up with changes made, or changes that we're making to the allocation process. So first, an allocation is a school-based position, so this could be a teacher, principal, assistant principal, counselor, teacher assistant, all the positions that are based at a school site. And then one thing you're going to hear throughout this presentation today is enrollment because all allocations are based on enrollment. And so we have different types of enrollment. We'll talk about first, projected or preliminary enrollment. That's the enrollment we use to project allocations for the upcoming school year. So we reset allocations based on projected enrollment. Infinite campus enrollment, that's what we pull from infinite campus after projected enrollment has been used to compare the two. And if there's any major changes or significant changes between the two, then we look to adjust allocations accordingly so we can prep for count day. And then on count day, that's when we use our actual enrollment to set allocations. So the summary of the allocation process is first, we start with projected enrollment. That's developed by our district demographer. We then use that and our staffing guidelines to calculate preliminary allocations. And those preliminary allocations are shared with the schools so they can begin the spring hiring process or the transfer period, as you may have heard it called. After that, starting in late May and throughout the summer, business, TLL, or teaching, learning, and leadership and human resources are reviewing enrollment and allocations of schools and making adjustments based on those, any significant changes that we're seeing. And then on count day, that's when, the fourth and final count of enrollment at the beginning of school. That's the enrollment we use to determine allocations and not necessarily lock them in for the year, but that's really what sets it in alignment with our budget. And then throughout the rest of the year, we'll review allocations to see if there's anything or any areas where a new allocation may be triggered based on increased enrollment. So two new pieces of the allocation process. On count day, at our one and two-star schools, if we do have any schools that would lose an allocation based on slightly lower enrollment, those schools will keep that allocation. Also, after count day, we started that, or we started this, this year, the current fiscal year, when a school has triggered an additional allocation based on increased enrollment, we've added that allocation. And both of those items will be funded from the general fund contingency account. So again, this all starts with enrollment. Our per pupil funding makes up 88% of our general fund revenues. And without, or those revenues drive what we can afford and what costs we can afford. Our school-based positions make up 81% of general fund positions, and that doesn't include positions that provide direct support to students like psychologists and bus drivers. And then our staffing guidelines are based on enrollment. So if enrollment's increasing, our revenues and our allocations increase. And if our enrollment is decreasing, then our revenues and our allocations will decrease. Recent enrollment trends, here's a chart on birth rates. You can see they've significantly declined over the last 30-plus years. And then our countywide enrollment trends over the last four years. Overall, Washoe County has seen a decrease of 1,700 students or a 2.4% decrease. The school districts, we've seen enrollment decrease of over 4,000 students and continue to project enrollment decreases in the future. District-sponsored charter schools, state-sponsored charter schools, and private schools have seen increased enrollment. So when you hear that a school has lost an allocation, that's because of decreased enrollment. So the process for projected enrollment, our district demographer projects enrollment by taking a snapshot in the fall of current enrollment, rolling the students up to the next grade, accounting for any zoning changes. For kindergarten, recent birth rate trends are used to project what kindergartner enrollment may look like. And then we also throw in the impact of charter schools or private schools that are new or expanding. It's a very high-level summary of what that person does for their enrollment projection, but that's the basics of how we get to that enrollment projection. Then that enrollment projection is used to calculate, using the staffing guidelines, allocations for the upcoming school year. So again, all this is based on enrollment because so much of our budget is based upon what our enrollment is. Almost 90% of our general fund revenues and over 80% of our general fund positions are based on enrollment. So just as another example, if we were to lose 10 students on a district-wide basis, that's the equivalent of cost of one teacher position. Next, I'll hand it over to Tiffany to continue the conversation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, interim superintendent Dr. McNeil, President Smith, members of the board of trustees. As I take over, this is really a series of slides that highlights the collaborative effort involved in the allocation process. Really, once those preliminary enrollment counts are used to determine allocations and release to schools, that really kickstarts the collaborative effort between the business office, the associate chiefs in TLL, as well as HR. We engage in a series of regular meetings, and I'm going to highlight what takes place in those meetings. So areas of concern are discussed among the entire group, and the group makes recommendations based on those areas of concerns. As we go through times of change, those, those topics are brought forward to that group for collective problem solving. That, and that feedback includes associate chiefs working with principals at school sites to gather feedback based on what's happening in their schools as a result of these changes. And then that's brought back to the team. Schools receive the admin and certified allocations just after winter break. That's what kicks off that spring hiring process, which involves the overages and transfers that can take place with our staff members. And that also includes the education support professionals' positions that are released in later in the spring and April. This continues into the summer. We start looking at it in a slightly different way once we hit summer. When I say summer, it really begins at the end of the school year into the summer months. So this collaborative work continues. Prior to the start of summer, we will meet and look at any potential needs for adjustments in those enrollments that were projected. The goal of these reviews is to provide timely support to the schools that minimizes fall overages if possible and is also keeps the district's budget in mind and ensures that we're following those staffing guidelines. We continually work with principals, so associate chiefs are the liaison to principals about what's happening day-to-day in their schools and monitoring the enrollment that's happening throughout the summer months. We continually look at infinite campus and compare those projections against the allocations that were given to determine if any adjustments are needed. Online registration percentages are a big part of the data that is reviewed during that time as well. The number of students above a trigger for an allocation is to, is used to determine if an additional allocation may be released prior to count day. And then the process really kicks into full gear once the school year starts, once we see how many students show up on day one and see what is actually happening in our schools. Those regular meetings during the first four weeks of the school year ramp up and become weekly meetings where we engage in the same problem-solving work about what's actually happening in our schools and what we can do to provide supports. As we move into count day, principals are constantly working with associate chiefs during this time to provide the feedback that we bring back to the team on that weekly basis. Actual enrollment counts are used to determine if the schools will gain or lose allocations on count day. So we don't know fully until count day, but we can definitely look at data trends to help inform those, those decisions. Like I said, associate chiefs work with principals, and once we get to count day, there's a lot of leadership actions that need to take place if adjustments are made in terms of adding a classroom or based on lower enrollment than projected, if we have to consolidate classes. And that's work that we do in conjunction with our principals. On count day, which is the fourth week of school enrollment, that's when the allocation adjustments are made in alignment with the staffing guideline ratios. The adjustment ensures that we're staffing our allocations based on that 88% of the general fund revenues going towards enrollment. Changes on count day is what kickstarts our fall overage and transfer process for our teachers.
And finally, the changes that we're making to the allocation process. So again, on count day, for one and two-star schools that have a slightly lower actual enrollment than what was projected, that would typically cause them to lose an allocation. Instead, we will keep the allocations at that school, the minimum, at those schools to minimize disruption after count day. That will be funded using the general fund contingency account. And then also the mid-year allocation adjustments. We, again, we started that this year, and we'll continue that moving forward. This year, we, in quarter two and quarter three, we took a snapshot of what enrollment looked like at schools. And if schools had significant enrollment increases, then we were adding allocations at grade levels where, where that was justified. And that was also funded from the general fund contingency account. So that concludes our presentation on allocations, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. If we could go back one more to the mid-year allocation. So for something that seems to be so commonsensical, this is a big deal. We did it this year for the first time, and this is something that we're going to be doing going forward. But this is a very important shift in the way that we allocate our teachers in the classroom. Can you confirm that we will be working really closely with the principals at the sites and making these decisions? Because they will, of course, be on a case-by-case basis, but can you walk us through? We haven't done it yet. We, we trialed it this year. But can you walk us through the things that you will consider and the voices that you'll bring in?
Absolutely. So you're right, it is a new process, but we already have systems to help support that. So the same system that we've been using throughout the spring, we will just extend that through the fall and springtime for the current year as well. So we'll be continually pulling data, infinite campus enrollment data, and working with our principals. Just because we get a, a trigger of one student over doesn't mean we, we automatically get an allocation because we have to look and, and see if there's a reason for that. Is that enrollment sustainable? Is it going to continue? And you know what, we don't want to be giving an, an allocation for one student only to find out by the time they get the allocation, we've lost five students. So we do monitor the data, and we, we will be using that to group problem solve, getting that principal input, getting that teacher input on the impact that's happening in the classrooms, and then bringing it back to the team for continued reflection and problem solving as we refine the process.
Thank you. I appreciate the details on the process. It, it is complex, and I totally understand that. I have a couple, couple, I guess heartfelt thoughts that I want to share as I've heard them from teachers and families and students and principals, deans, et cetera. There's a lot of angst and worry around this. It, it can be very disruptive. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. It is extremely disruptive on many levels for many reasons to many people. And so I appreciate that you're really, you're really taking a different look at this. I, I have heard from several principals that looking at IC infinite campus has really helped because I know principals and administrative assistants have spent hours looking at which families are coming back. And it seems that that's a waste of time. Although it's important work, why not use IC? The infinite campus is there for them so they can be doing the other things they need to be doing. And I do think that it's important we rely on that. And, and reciprocally, we lose a student or gain one student, doesn't necessarily trigger an allocation. How do you decide at what point? I know there's charts, and they're rather complex, and it's kind of, it depends. And so if you, if you gain one student, you don't automatically receive an allocation. So at what point are those allocations triggered?
So for the, the mid-year allocation process, again, our first year doing it this year, we looked at schools where certain grade levels had three or more students over the trigger point for an allocation. So as an example, if a school had 63 students in December, and on count day, they had 60, so they had, and let's go with a ratio of 20 to one, like it's first grade. So they have three teachers. Had they had the 64 on count day, they would have had four teachers. So, I'm sorry, 63. So when we got to December and we looked and saw they had 63, or, so that's the three difference, that's when we looked to add an allocation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, and what concerns me is, and, and I know it's about numbers. I understand that. There, there's background, you know, dollars and, and sometimes not having all the people that you would like to have to accomplish the work that we want to complete. Having said that, our class sizes are too large the way they are to really support what our teachers were asking them and requiring them to do. I, I will just say that out loud. Our class sizes are too large. Our class sizes are too large. So when we put this three or more allocation number on a class size that's already too large, it gets to be a little overwhelming. And to me, that is where we really have to address our problems. And I will say, for anybody who's watching or listening, who wants to be superintendent of this school district, that is something that we must address, is our class sizes are too large. And so we have to work backwards and take away, not add. And again, I appreciate your work and I realize this is very complicated. It's complex. We don't have all the employees that we would really need and want to accomplish our goals. And I worry about our class sizes.
Thank you, President Smith. So trustee Nicolet, I can appreciate that very much as a former elementary school principal. One thing that I would say, as you all start to contemplate your platform for a legislation coming up, I would talk about class sizes. Because as Jeff and Tiffany have pointed out, right, your budget is determined on student enrollment. And so as class sizes are very large, and I agree with you, I think that would be a perfect opportunity to take that and talk about adding that to your legislative platform.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. No, I appreciate your remarks and trustee Nicolet's remarks, because it is, it is a big deal. And let me preface my remarks and questions. And if some of my questions sound a little critical, they're not intended to be, they're not directed at you. It's, I understand the environment we live in. But I do know that we're not rolling around in gold bars. I understand that. So I know, I know resources are limited. So a handful of questions, and I'll try to be brief, because when I visit schools, the allocation process, I struggle to understand it, because it is so complex. And it is probably the number one point of discussion that the principals and some of the teachers want to have with me. That's a fact. And I'm sort of left empty handed, because I don't know how to address it. Some of it just simply doesn't make sense to me. So this is very helpful. It's also a discussion that, you know, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but it almost, it's a discussion for a workshop, because there's so much moving parts to this. So I wanted to preface that way. I do hear a lot about it as well. Are the guidelines we have, how do they, so the first question I have is the guidelines that we have, how do they contrast with the state guidelines? Or perhaps those are state mandates when it comes to class size? Can you help, can you help us understand that?
Yes. So on, I'll, two answers to your question. The first is special education. Case loads for special education teachers are outlined in Nevada Administrative Code 388. And so our special ed teacher guidelines are based on those caseloads. On the general fund side, the, there's class size, class size mandates in kindergarten through third grade. Kindergarten through second grade are 16 to one, and it's 18 to one for third grade. Those are the ratios that are in state law. However, the state has never funded us at those ratios. So earlier on today's agenda, you saw higher ratios in kindergarten through third grade than what's, than, than the requirements of 16 to one and 18 to one. We have honored our historical, historically funded ratios in those grade levels. Before we had the People Center Funding Plan, there was a separate revenue source for class size reduction. And that funding bill recognized those higher ratios. When we implemented the People Center Funding Plan, there was no separate funding bill to say class sizes have to be 17 to one in first and second grade. So that went away and it just resets what was in law, but we're still funding those class sizes at that ratio. For other grade levels, there's nothing in law or administrative code about what the class sizes should be.
How do we, if we wanted to, how would we change our guidelines here internally?
So that would have to go through the budget process. There's, you know, significant cost to any of those changes. During the strategic plan budget process, you all approved reductions to fourth and fifth grade classrooms to a max class size of 30 to one at one and two star schools. And then also the expansion of our ed tech specialist positions from 21 hours to 31 hours a week.
Let me ask you about kindergarten. Why are our guidelines for kindergarten higher than first and second grade? That is always puzzled.
Yeah, so that is a product of the old, or how funding for kindergarten used to work. So this is going way back. There used to be a separate revenue source called full day kindergarten, and the state funded us at a ratio of 21 to one. And then we also had class size reduction with those lower ratios. I think it was 17 in first and second grade, and then 20 to one in third grade. Those were the historically funded ratios. So when the state ended full day K, they, well, they didn't end it, they shifted it into the old DSA formula, which is where we got our general fund revenue dollars. And we just kept the 21 to one ratio in our staffing guidelines. What you'll see in the staffing guidelines, it says 25 to one. But what that does is gets us to a 21 to one ratio on a district-wide basis. And that's how we measure class sizes in those grades.
One comment I wanted to say too, is oftentimes toward this time of year, I'll have principals tell me they'll project their own enrollment based on what they're receiving, and yet they're still losing allocations. Slide three caught my attention here, projected preliminary enrollment, enrollment projection for the upcoming school year, that is used to provide schools with preliminary allocations. Thank you. I addressed that already with you. I apologize. One of the, about, again, I just, I just want to get some of these, these comments on the record, because I hear this a lot. When I look at slide 19, four, one and two star schools, that experience slightly lower enrollment causing them to normally lose an allocation, those schools would get to keep an allocation on count day. That's, I think, very appropriate. And yet, I hear from some of those schools that are performing well, that they feel penalized because they're not getting the allocations, you know, when, when their, when their projections increase or when they have additional students. Does that make sense?
Vice President Mayberry, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
And Jeff, I want you to correct my math. But during your budget presentation, there was a slide, so you all approved additional lowering the class size for fourth and fifth for one and two star schools. So that was approved. But one of the slides that we created for you was so that you could see if we were to fund all of our schools for fourth and fifth grade, check my math here, that was some upwards, northwards of $4 million?
Correct. Yes, that's an additional 2.5 million compared to the 1.5 million for the one and two star schools that was approved.
Okay, thank you.
I'll also jump in. I've heard that, that same thing too. And I, there is certainly a point there. And I know that our associations also feel the same way, that it's a starting point, and it's a movement in that direction with intentionality, because we have to begin somewhere, and this is, this is a step in that direction. And when I've had those conversations, although it certainly recognizes the validity of what they're sharing, but most people understand that this is, this is a movement in that direction, and that we're also stating the intentionality of where we'd like to go.
Do most school districts have this kind of process across the country that we have in place? Is this, is this sort of the standard?
Most of the districts that I know of in the state of Nevada do a similar process through overages and transfers. And it all depends on working with the associations and what their employee associations and what could be in their CBAs. But yes, nationally, an allocation process is very similar to sausage making.
Yeah.
You know, it's something that you probably don't want to know a lot about, but it's something that we have to do.
Yeah. And again, it, it's, it can be a little awkward, you know, educating somebody like me in a public setting. So forgive the questions, they aren't intended to be critical. It's just something I think internally, our staff struggles with as well. When I'm out into the schools, there's a lot of why, it doesn't make any sense, and at times it doesn't. Yeah, you, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. I mean, it is a complicated process, but it's based on enrollment and staffing guidelines. So when we get to count day, we're truing up allocations to what enrollment is. So a three, four, and five star school, if they're triggering, let's say, a second grade allocation on count day, they're going to get it. Same thing if they're, you know, if they're set to lose an allocation because they have lower enrollment, then they would lose that allocation. But it's all enrollment based. You know, we're not playing games.
Yeah, I know you're not, I'm not suggesting you are, yeah.
And then, you know, also during the school year, we lose between 600 and 700 students per year. That's been the trend over the last several years. And we're not taking allocations away from schools either. That would be very disruptive to do that mid-year.
Can you refresh this more? Do we, do we budget some funds to minimize the impact post-count day in this, in the fiscal year budget in '25?
Yes, so that's this part right here. So we'll utilize the general fund contingency account.
So it's specific to one and two star schools?
For, to minimize the disruption on count day, that's correct. But then...
Answered my question, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's it for now. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for putting up with me. Again, I just, I hear this all the time, and it's just one of those topics of discussion where I feel inadequate, because it's, there's so many moving pieces to it.
I'm going to go to trustee Woodley next, but to this point, in a future conversation, we will talk about our legislative platform. And something that I have always had on my personal wish list as it relates specifically to this item, is quite frankly, the state funding, the state mandated ratios, which seems remarkably obvious. But that's something that, you know, we can also talk about in those future conversations, because they mandate a ratio and then they fund a different one. So trustee Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. So first, I want to say I appreciate the presentation. I really appreciate the continuous review and assessment as opposed to just the one time. That's awesome. What brought this to my attention was specific to one of the schools I was dealing with in my discussion with teachers and principal. And it was more related to special needs of kids and the allocation. And I will state for the record, make it clear, that when I did express my concern with superintendent, that was resolved. So I deeply appreciate that very much. Thank you. But I do have a question, because as it states here in the presentation, it's related to enrollment. So on specific to enrollment with regards to the allocations. So what do we have in place if, for example, within that enrollment, one school has more special needs than another, even though they have the same enrollment? Like, is there a consideration given to what the actual physical needs are for the student body or the students that we have with regards to special needs or any disability, et cetera?
Yeah, so we have separate staffing guidelines for our students with special needs. Again, those are based off of the caseloads that are defined in NAC 388. So as an example, the resource program is a ratio of 24 to one. So at every school across the district, the ratio is 24 to one. If they have a 25th student, then they would trigger that next allocation for those special ed services.
Cool, thank you. I appreciate that. And I, and I do like this new process. This is, helps a lot, because I hear the same thing, like Dr. Nicolet and trustee Mayberry. I think we all do when we visit the schools, you know, we hear that. So I really appreciate that. I don't want to belabor the point, but I mean, I hear it on the other side too, because I've had teachers tell me, sometimes, for example, 20 kids in one class with a certain lifestyle or certain support system is not the same as 20 kids in another school, in another class, where there's significant trauma that those children deal with, and the teachers themselves are dealing with. They would say, it's much tougher for me if I have 20 kids and 10 of those come to me and they already have trauma, they don't have the support system that these kids in the other school. So it goes both ways, right? So yeah, it is, it's definitely complicated. There is no one size fits all. But I appreciate the continuous assessment, the review, and giving us updates like this. I really do appreciate that. I know that we all do. So, so thank you very much for that.
JJ, could you advance real quickly to the slide where we have our staffing guidelines? I just want to point something out for trustee Woodley. So up at the top, you'll see, in this, we started doing, oh goodness, when did we start splitting title and standard? I'm going to date myself.
I started here in 2011, and it was before that.
There you go. Okay. So what we started to do is to actually take a look at, similar to what you're speaking about, that schools are very different. And so we started to split our schools based on title and risk factors and standard. So you'll see that the allocations are based, they're lower for a title school or risk, a school at risk versus a standard enrollment. So we started doing that many, many years ago.
Thank you. That's exactly, that addresses that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. McNeil.
Can we go back to page nine? I just have a few, make sure I kind of understand things right. Yeah, that's right, wonderful. So let me read back and then tell me if I'm wrong. Roughly 60,000 students at WCSD, roughly 10,000 students in other schools. And then, what about homeschooling? Do we have any stats or numbers?
I don't have that readily available today.
Ballpark, can you give us some? I mean, I've heard 1%.
I don't have a number I can give you today.
You don't want me to, okay, okay. Dr. McNeil, would anybody, I mean, would you just happen to know?
I don't have the number off of the top of my head. We would have to get it from the state, because they have to register with the state.
I see. So just in my district, in the last few weeks, I've seen three requests. They don't necessarily come to us, just information on schools that are expand, private schools, expanding or opening. And then I believe there's one up in North County. Are those factored into the projected enrollments?
So, you know, we're projecting enrollment one year at a time. So this third bullet point here, where we show a decrease of 1,150 students for the upcoming school year, that's really made up of two things. That was the enrollment bubble, if you remember those charts that we've showed in previous budget presentations. And then also the expansion or the opening of the Northwest Coral Academy over by McCarran and IED. I think that was between 300 and 350 students. That's included in here. So when we, when we do know of a school that's opening or expanding, we do put that projection in here to make sure that we're accounting for it and don't have any kind of surprise on count day.
And many of these are requests. They're not, they're not done yet, but I, what my brain is hearing is we're maybe, it could be worse. We could be losing more than what we're projecting.
I don't know about the upcoming school year, but, you know, we're aware of requests to expand or open new schools in the future, and we will include that in projected enrollment.
Okay. And then, this is just, I'm not, this is just, as a non-expert, as, when I'm reading some of these things, I think I'm seeing, a lot of them tend to be K through six. some of these things, I think I'm seeing, a lot of them tend to be K through six on the school expansions, and again, that's just conjecture on my part, kind of what I read here and there. And if that's true, then I think we would see not as much decline in middle school and high school, because these schools that are K six, when they're done, those kids are going to have to go somewhere, presumably they might come back to us. Is there some logic, does that make sense?
You know, I think with the opening of Debbie Smith, CTE Academy, I believe that, you know, that's our hope is to provide choice and option for good quality options within our district. So that would certainly be what we hope to do, is bring people that have looked for other options, alternatives, back to our district and show them we've got some great alternatives here.
But I guess what, if, if we do have a lot of K through six private schools, mathematically, they're going to have to go somewhere, presumably that's good for the school district funding, that they're going to come back to us at junior high, middle school, we call it, middle school or high school. I mean, that's just my logic, I'm not the smartest jack-in-the-box, but...
President Smith, if I may, and Trustee Church, it's going to just depend on the configuration of that particular school. So it could be a K six, it could be a K eight, and then if they're, you know, Coral Academy is now a K 12, so they most likely would keep their students unless they're going to unenroll and come back to us, but it really depends on the configuration of the particular school.
Kind of a crystal ball thing. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. So I was, I was wondering if there would be a way to look at our title, because the budget's already pretty much done this time, but so we could get ahead of the game, because just expanding on what Trustee Woodley said, the needs are different in schools, and what I have seen is our Title I schools, they start to improve, and then if they have a reduced enrollment, their allocations, they lose allocations. But the problem is, is nothing has changed outside of that school for those kids. A lot of the kids are English learners, their parents may not speak English, they're working two, three, sometimes both parents are working two jobs. So nothing changes, so the minute those allocations are gone, that we're in support of those kids in those communities, it, I would have to think it's going to just like, slide back, because the outer thing has not changed. The change was made because we have the supports inside of the school. Is there a way to look at, just to get a number figure, what would be just a dream, a dream staff at a Title I school, what that cost would be, so we could kind of maybe be preemptive and start looking at that? Because I just have to say, we want to improve academics, it's going to come from the supports in our Title I schools, which are most, a lot of them are one and two-star schools, and our special needs. If we could also look at a dream staffing for our special needs kids, so that we could start having conversations on how we can do that for the next budget. How, what would be the optimum staffing for Title I and special needs? Because I think we'll definitely start making some headway by doing that.
And I can take that, we can set some intentionality about that, you know, for the next budgetary cycle, you know, by having conversations like we are now, and then again, as we consider what our legislative platform is, and what it is that we're asking the state for and how we would want to use that money, so that's a great idea. Vice President Mayberry?
Thank you, I'll try to be quick. Just on this slide here, thank you, Madam President, by the way, on this slide here, if you look at the elementary guidelines, I mean, there's really nothing remarkable about them, they're, they're pretty much the same for Title I, RISC, and then standard. And is that direct, a direct result of the budgeting process?
Yes, so...
Oh man, I'm sorry.
So, so, so over time, you know, or at some point in time, these staffing guidelines were put into place, and we've been able to make small adjustments to them over the years. Some of those were to make lower ratios at our Title I or RISC schools, but you're right, there's not significant differences in all of these, and some of them, it's the same staffing. But if we were to make changes to these, that would have to be part of a budget conversation.
Okay, yeah, I just throw that out there, and then, I was out of school last week, and a teacher gained a few more students from the previous month, and I know we just signed this MOU last week, or at our last board meeting, that's extremely positive and something I think that, you know, few districts do, but how would you, how would you handle that? I mean, you're not, you're not going to provide another allocation this year so close to the end of the year, right?
I mean, we do review those during the year.
Okay.
I don't know the specific instance, but we, we do make those considerations, we have in the second semester. In fact, there was a special ed one that we added today, so we could put a little more stuff in the classroom, yeah.
And again, I'm mindful that our resources are limited and our, and the teacher pipeline is limited, I get that, and so, and then I want to just speak briefly to slide nine, if we can go back to that slide earlier on, again, I don't think there's anything remarkable about this slide either. I mean, it, this, we're seeing an increase of our district-sponsored charter schools. I believe there's been an increase in capacity of some of the state-sponsored charter schools, yet that, 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 that change in our student enrollment, I mean, the balance of that isn't necessarily going to those other alternative schools, we're seeing a decline in the birth rate, so I don't think the public should misinterpret this as folks are somehow fleeing Washoe County. I mean, the reality is, most of the students, most of our students in this country are going to be attending public schools, I mean, that's the reality of it. In fact, I was looking at the census data, just, you know, that was a process for 2020, and 82% of young people in this nation go to public schools, not charter schools, not private schools, public schools. So I just think it's, I think it's important to put in perspective when we talk about the decline of our enrollment here in Washoe County, particularly with the, with the birth rates, and frankly, with the constant narratives that are reported on the public education system, you know, it wouldn't surprise me that, that summer, you know, want to go a different path. So anyways, my commentary, thank you for listening, appreciate all you're doing.
I'm going to let you finish us up, Trustee Nicolet, but before you do that, just a couple of things, things that I've been thinking about, is that as we see the FMP process play itself out, and we are building these new schools, and then the zoning changes, and then certain school sites move forward in a different capacity and service to our communities, that can also be opportunities for us to look at staffing the new portfolio of schools that we have. So I do want everybody to know that there could be an opportunity with that. And then, a very, just a brief question, with our Schools of Choice program, we just finished our last and most recent round, since that process happens early enough, that's able to be considered into the allocations process before the year, is that correct? Because I know that that's a different way of allocating students around the district.
Yeah, like I said, we have those collaborative meetings on a regular basis, and that's actually a standing agenda item that we've had on there since the decision was made to move forward with school choices. What does that look like? How does that impact allocations? How often do we look at that? So we've been, you know, really engaging in a case study around this to see the impacts, see how we can get in front of those adjustments on count day.
That's a beautiful segue, thank you, and I appreciate that you're looking at the collective voices and experiences, because capturing those day-to-day, those moment-to-moment experiences when things shift are not only affect emotions, but affect quality. And I have spoken to custodians, administrative assistants, who share with me the angst around these changes, so it's really felt throughout a school, so thank you for that collaborative approach. And then I will close with this, I have spoken with principals who worry very much about they're on this upward trajectory, and they're, they fear that they're going to lose ABC position, and they fear that what they've worked so hard to accomplish will now be undermined, and they're going to have to start again. And so, again, back to the collective discussions, extremely important, because to me, making sure we support all of our schools to grow and, and continue to support those schools that are, are showing progress and can describe why they're showing progress, we got to support that, and so, and thank you, thank you for this work.
Well, this was an outstanding item, thank you so much for the work that went into this, and thank you again to Trustee Nicolet and to Trustee Woodley for championing this very important conversation. On that note, we will go ahead and close item 3.05, and at this point, we will pause for a break, it is 4:22 PM, so let's go ahead and let's restart at, what's 15 minutes from now roughly, we'll round it up, how about 4:40, but let's start moseying in before 4:40. Thank you so much. All right, it's 4:44 PM, and I'd like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. It is April 23, 2024. We left this meeting at the conclusion of item 3.05, and now we open item 3.06, the discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of high school English language arts instructional materials from Houghton Mifflin Hardcore in the approximate amount of $2,900,000. This is an item for possible action, and we welcome our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Troy Parks, and our Director of Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, Kendra Fox.
Good evening, President Smith, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board. I'm Kendra Fox, Director of Secondary Curriculum Instruction for the record. I'm bringing to you a request to purchase high school English language arts materials. We started the process back in August of 2023, when the district asked us to start the process because our current materials were approximately 15 years old. We used the state-approved list. They had five choices for us that our Committee of Stakeholders reviewed the materials. They reviewed them based on quality of materials, student access, teacher supports, and assessment resources within the programs. In March, they came, or February, they came back for a semifinalist meeting, and we narrowed the choices down to two, Savas and Houghton Mifflin. And at that point, they went, they took the materials to their classrooms and did sample lessons with students, got student feedback. And also, at that point, it went out to public comment. And that was available on our website for two weeks for review, and then it's still available for people to look at even now. At that point in March, we came back together as a committee, and the committee deliberated and came up with the decision to move Houghton Mifflin Hardcore to the Board of Trustees for approval. One important thing to note is, last year, you approved our middle school materials from the same vendor. And so, we think this is a really good opportunity for us to have a same program for sixth, grade six through 12 for our students. And one last thing to note before I open it up for questions, is that this is for standard English 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, freshman English to high, to senior English, not AP, and not concurrent enrollment. It's just standard English courses. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you for questions.
Seeing no lights on, JJ, do we have public comment on this item?
I have no cards for this item.
Thank you, President Smith. Just, I mean, it's $2 million. I know we have to do it. But can you tell us how often, I mean, you said it's been 15 years. Is it usually about 15, oh, like, how often is, do we have to come up with that little walnut?
We are, I think that's a great question. We try to adopt every seven years. What happened with this is that there was a time in 2011 or so where the legislature let us stop because we were in an economic downturn. And so, we've been playing catch-up for the last several years. We started, we started with math and then have worked our way forward. And so, now we're to high school English language.
That's, that's good. I mean, you're getting us down, down the road so all our ducks are in a, thank you.
Thank you. Hi. I really appreciate Attachment A. I think that's, it's really helpful. And I guess I'm thanking JJ for, for adding that to the packet. I do have a question about the process. There are five you can only use identified by the state, and all of them were reviewed. Yes. And so,
That is correct.
Were the three that are not on Attachment A, did they just, like, bomb?
The part of our process so that the teachers aren't review, not having to disrupt their classes and, and teach all five programs, that's when they narrow it down. At that, they narrow it down, and then we take two to the classrooms for, for feedback and, and review.
So when I look at that feedback, again, thank you very much. I think I would like to see more of this with a lot of the curriculum materials that we review or ultimately approve. There's, they seem to be fairly equal, Houghton, Mifflin, and Savas. How did you ultimately
our Chief Financial Officer, the one and only Mark Mathers, and our Chief Operating Officer, Adam Cersei.
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Smith. Adam Cersei, for the record. Um, this presentation, um, and this, this item is coming to you unanimously recommended by our community-led committee of the Capital Funding Protection Committee. So in support of our promise and as all of these finance, uh, capital projects-related items do. Um, this C I P is required as a part of our complete budget submission to the state. Um, it is a very collaborative process that's comprehensive in nature, um, tremendously informed, as you'll hear tonight quite a bit, by our Facility Modernization Plan, which, as you're well aware, had unprecedented levels of community and district engagement to develop. And it's also comprehensive. We often talk about W C one funding. All of our capital revenue streams are considered in the entirety of this five-year C I P. Um, I like this slide. What this is, is, as I mentioned, a five-year uh, comprehensive plan of the district's anticipated capital project needs as well as the available resources. However, it is not an explicit authorization of projects within that plan. All of these individual projects will have to come back to the Board, the Capital Funding Protection Committee, and then the Board in the appropriate form and fashion. So I just feel like that's important to emphasize. This is an important step and a required step annually, um, but it is not the approval of any of these projects. So just a little bit about the development process. It is very iterative and collaborative, both with the community, with our staff. Um, the F M P informs the majority of the program, uh, but it also includes a detailed and data-informed uh, assessment of all of our critical needs across the district, both from a capacity standpoint and just a maintenance standpoint. And then there's uh, the partnership with business and finance. Are we actually going to be able to afford all of this work? So with that, I'll turn it over for the next couple of slides to Mr. Mathers.
Thanks, Adam. So as Adam said, we go through various iterations of this plan, and like any financial plan or budget, there's obviously the constraint of resources. So we do make projections of our W C one sales tax and property tax revenues. Those are the two main revenue sources by far that go into the meat of the capital improvement program. Um, we've seen very strong growth of property taxes with development and the continued increase in, in housing prices in Washoe. So you can see we've gone from eighty-two million in property taxes in fiscal year twenty-four to more than ninety million in twenty-five. And then sales tax, we had two straight years of double-digit increases, and, and since then, it's moderated a bit, which would be what you'd expect, kind of a version of the mean after really strong years of ten-plus percent per year growth. Uh, we expect things to kind of normalize in the future. Um, but as Adam said, we go through various iterations and financial modeling to make sure that we have enough funding for any new schools needed for new growth, because that is, you know, an important component to everything we, we look at. And, and then we also go beyond five years, really, when we do modeling. We want to make sure we don't run out of money after year five. We go out ten years and even further when we look at facility modernization plan needs, you know, and the programmed um, capital improvements there and then anticipated revenue. So by law, the C I P is constrained or contained to five years, but we actually go beyond that when, when, you know, kind of are articulating plans. So this slide here just shows you year by year projected revenues. Um, both those revenue sources I talked about can be used either for uh, as pledged revenues for future bond sales, which is kind of our normal course, but they can also be used for pay-as-you-go projects, cash funding projects, which we like to do when we look at elementary schools or smaller, quotes, smaller projects to avoid interest payments. So again, a lot of different modeling to try to maximize our resources and get the most projects done within a given time period. Sorry, this just provides a pie chart breaking that out. And so you can see W C one revenues, given the growth in taxable sales, you know, now is approaching um, close to half of our total resources here. But again, you can see the two largest resources here. And then um, as you know, we try to be, you know, conservative, reasonably conservative in our projections, and we want to make sure we can always cover our debt service. And so we have, you know, some of the, the uh, considerations here are we have very strong coverage. We, we buffer ourselves against any downturn in the economy, make sure we do that. Um, we have strong reserves, close to a year's worth of debt service, so we could go almost a total entire year with zero revenues and still cover debt service for one year. And that's why we have a double A rating. Uh, we actually got affirmation this morning from S and P and Moody's confirming our double, double A ratings from both agencies. We have the strongest debt ratings of any school district in Nevada. Um, so, you know, we want to keep that because that lowers our interest costs when we go out to market. Um, but again, we never want to get too far ahead and risk not being able to cover debt service because that's deadly. Never want to be in that situation. So those are the factors that go into our double A rating.
So moving back into the, the actual project side of the C I P, thanks, Mark. Um, you know, I'd kind of like to kind of begin with the summary just of the major components. I'll try to break it down into the F M P component or pillar, the capital renewal, which is your, you know, major maintenance, replacing roofs, replacing H V C systems, replacing pavement, things like that, and then other major projects. Um, as you, you guys are very familiar with the F M P projects. We'll get into a little bit more detail this evening. Capital Renewal Program is just summarized in tonight's C I P, um, and we'll come back to you in June for the F Y twenty-five detailed allocation um, and other major projects that'll be highlighted tonight that you're familiar with as well as retaining capacity for potential new schools if developments materialize. So this is a pie chart illustrating the distribution of these major project or program elements across the C I P. You can see that large majority slice of the pie in orange represents the, the sum total of all of our F M P related projects in this five-year C I P. So you can see how much of the program is going to be directed towards that initiative. And then the next slide just shows the source data really for that pie chart. Um, you've got your, again, capital renewal program at a steady fifty million dollar per year investment that, as I said, we'll discuss in detail um, at a subsequent meeting for F Y twenty-five, and then the other major components break, uh, filling out the C I P. I should mention on this slide, attached to this item is a detailed breakdown, more detailed than this, of the C I P. That's the actual document, as well as the associated funding streams that will be uh, sourced for all of these projects that will be submitted as a part of the budget. So just a little bit of a detailed discussion on these components. I want to start first on the F M P. This is the entire two thousand twenty-three F M P program of projects that was developed in partnership with our community and with the support of Canon Design and was approved by this board just last December. And the important emphasis on this slide is that the C I P that's before you today reflects the delivery on exactly these projects as was approved by the Board just a few months ago. I think that's very important to emphasize. We went through that whole process. We did it very collaboratively and transparency, transparently, and now we are intending to take that next step and deliver on those projects. So zooming in on that dash red area that I had highlighted, we've got really this first five-year window. I'm not going to go through the projects in detail on this slide, but you can read many of them. You can see that um, each of these projects, as depicted in this F M P graphic, are now, can be found translated into action in the five-year C I P. The costs shown on the F M P graphic are escalated in the C I P at five percent annually. The, the F M P clearly specified these are two thousand twenty-three-year-dollar budget estimates. And so in the future, projects will cost more, and we incorporated that anticipated cost escalation into the C I P. And then, of course, distributed over, over time, right? All those funds aren't, uh, aren't spent evenly as projects develop. So there's really two slides that zoom in on those first five years uh, of the F M P, the five-year immediate horizon here. Again, all of these projects and the associated funding and schedules can be found translated into action in this current five-year C I P. So only one slide dedicated to these projects because this board has heard action on all of these already. Um, um, just a few weeks from now, we're anticipating action on the Vaughn Rebuild Project and hopefully um, groundbreaking ceremony. And various degrees of other action is already underway associated with all of these projects as recommended by the F M P. However, um, in F Y twenty-five, again, as specified by the F M P, we anticipate coming to the Capital Funding Protection Committee, and hopefully then subsequently to the Board of Trustees to recommend um, design phase action towards the modernization of North Valleys High School. We've talked about this before. This is our largest high school in the district today by enrollment, and there is continued growth in that region. So the F M P specifies an expansion as well as a modernization scope um, in a timeframe of approximately two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-seven. Now, the details of that plant, that project are still very much to be determined, but the scope, schedule, and budget that you see programmed in the C I P is a reflection of what was developed through that F M P process. Similarly, Sparks High School is another major project that is born out of the F M P and will be coming back to you in F Y twenty-five for initial uh, study and architectural investigation to inform a major modernization project. You'll hear more about that in F Y twenty-five. And then um, lastly, on the F M P portion, um, is our first sheep shed. If you guys are familiar with these types of designs, we've talked about our elementary school pinwheels and our elementary school pods already. Maxwell is slated to be our first endeavor to modernize a school of this design type, and will be back before the Board in F Y twenty-five as we take our initial steps into that process. I think it's important to note, you know, these are going to be very unique architectural projects. These will likely be conducted on active campuses. They may entail phased construction. Um, and so there are some extended construction schedules anticipated, especially for these first ones, um, so that we take our time, figure it out, write, and execute it safely and in a way that's has minimal disruption to the students on campus. But those are just the highlights of some of the F M P projects in this C I P. Again, the majority of this major program. Just a couple of quick slides to emphasize the capital renewal program. I mentioned it previously. This is just a representative cross-section of the types of projects that, um, that fifty million dollars will be distributed across in F Y twenty-five. And again, that comes before the Capital Funding Protection Committee and the Board of Trustees annually on the fiscal year cycle. So anticipate details on that and proposed action in June. Um, also, an informative part of that is really just that um, asset management component. So um, all of our essential assets to operate the district, um, I T infrastructure, um, fleet infrastructure, things of that nature are prioritized on a, a data-driven basis, and that's how basically that program or that capital renewal program is composed. And then lastly, um, for lack of a better term, we're just categorizing this uh, group of projects as other major projects. Very, very familiar with the ongoing uh, project work at Debbie Smith C T E Academy. There's expenditures still in F Y twenty-five associated with that, so it's a part of this C I P. Um, we are actively soliciting bids for the transportation yard. You guys are very familiar with that. Expect updates on that soon. And then the central transfer, central administrative facilities has been a part of the C I P for a couple of years now, and it remains um, scheduled for design in F Y twenty-six and construction in F Y twenty-seven. Um, I do want to highlight there is scoping and uh, architectural study programmed in F Y twenty-five. Really, when we're talking about should we build new onsite, should we buy elsewhere and renovate? How might we incorporate um, other school district properties or facilities into future central administrative facility needs? Those questions really need to be answered before we could hire an architect and actually assign them, you know, a design task. So that is proposed to be funded in F Y twenty-five, and of course, the actual work associated with that will have to come back before the Board, and will be hopefully a very exciting endeavor in F Y twenty-five. So that's kind of the highlights. Um, again, just want to emphasize the collaborative nature of uh, the process and the blessed status that we find ourselves in to be able to move forward with confidence because of the revenue streams that we have with these important and necessary projects for the community. So again, this comes with the unanimous recommendation of the Capital Funding Protection Committee, and the recommendation for the approval of the plan is uh, before you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you, guys, for all the work that you guys do on this. Um, I do have just a couple of questions. Um, and I know there's been a lot of work in the background, uh, but just recently, um, last board meeting, we did have some members from the Gerlach community come out. So can you guys just for the record, kind of explain some of the work that's been there, just in case, you know, for public knowledge, really?
Sure. Anytime there's, you know, short, medium, or long-term capacity needs, whether it's out of school or in this unique instance for um, staff, staff accommodations in the remote uh, community of Gerlach, it's typically addressed through that capital renewal program. So um, likely ahead of the F Y twenty-five capital renewal program, like I mentioned, will come back in June. We'll have some specific uh, uh, resources identified to address that. We've got some interim, you know, interim plans that we're hoping to pursue immediately to address those needs. And then if necessary, we'll have um, potential capital resources to address that.
Awesome. Thank you. And then uh, just another follow-up. Uh, can you just kind of give us a quick snapshot? Like, I, I know Sted Elementary needs a lot of work. Uh, can you just kind of elaborate on, you know, what's going on there, please?
Sure. So on slide sixteen, um, I glossed over all of those projects, but Sted Elementary School specifically was identified in the F M P for complete replacement. Um, and so we've already received approval for funding and proceeded with hiring of an architect to design a new elementary school on a site that we already own, not on the existing campus. So um, a thousand yards as the crow flies, uh, we're actively designing a new school to replace Sted Elementary School that will look and feel similar to the current prototypes in Skie Polakita's Bow Hatch. Um, and you, and you'll likely hear, the Board will likely hear updates on that this fall.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you, gentlemen, for your continued work in improving our schools. Uh, can you give us a little update on Sparks Middle School? I didn't see that in your presentation, but there's a lot of money allocated for that. And then I'll have a, another question following.
Sure. Sparks Middle School is identified in the five-year C I P um, for complete replacement.
Okay.
Um, you know, you could probably find it most clearly on slide fifteen, I believe. But it's a couple of years into the future before it is scheduled to be initiated, rather, F Y twenty-five, pardon me. Um, so it should be funded for initial study and design in F Y twenty-five, um, as per the F M P. Um, and will be somewhat informed by the outcomes of the K eight study as there are some interplay between what might be uh, ultimately concluded at the Trainer Campus and what's most appropriate at Sparks Middle School Campus. But it's, as you can see there, kind of at the bottom, that red, second to the bottom, that red bar. Sparks Middle School scheduled for a complete reconstruction, beginning in F Y twenty-five, but not ultimately concluding likely until F Y twenty-nine.
Excellent. Um, thank you for that. And then uh, one of my favorite topics, single-point access, a single-point entry. I know Sparks High School, uh, that's underway there. Excuse me. I, I don't see it and hear nothing. I wouldn't expect it to, but can you give, can you give us a, an update on where we are at in that process? I know we're in design. I'm curious on, on how soon we can, we can pull the trigger in terms of Curious on how soon we can, we can pull the trigger in terms of construction.
So we are, so we were presented this to the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission as well as the board recently. We're actively bidding major improvements at the McQueen, Sparks, and Damone Ranch campuses. Looking forward to bringing those contracts awards to the board possibly in June, and my understanding is that they're anticipating substantial completion just ahead of the start of next school year. So look forward to major updates for the board and the public there. And then future projects of that similar nature at other campuses will either be included in the capital renewal plan, as these ones were, or, and, major projects, FMP projects such as at Reed and Sparks High School and North Valleys High School, those will be a standard scope element of any FMP project. Major safety upgrades, again, bringing those schools up to a level of parity from a facility standpoint with our newest schools. Those will be base scope elements in FMP projects.
And the Damone-McQueen design of the single-point entry, that'll lay the groundwork for the four other schools, because it'll sort of be an opportunity to kind of test, see how it works, see how it looks, and then move forward on the other four?
Yep. Yep. We're working really hard with those principals, those school communities, those campus police officers, to really ensure that, you know, not only the design and construction is solid, but that when we come back to school next school year, that some of those behaviors are adjusted as well.
All right. Seeing no other lights on, JJ, do we have public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right. Well, I'll bring it back to this board for a motion, if there is such a desire for one.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move forward. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the Washoe County School District's fiscal year 2025-2029 five-year capital improvement plan as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
Second.
That was very polite, Clerk Rodriguez. All right. So we have a motion by Trustee Woodley, seconded by Trustee Nicolet, and seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you all so much, and thank you very much, gentlemen, for this. Great work, and our sincere thanks to the Capital Funding Protection Committee. All right, everyone, that closes item 3.07 and closes section three in its entirety. And so what I'll be doing as the meeting manager now, seeing as we have some guests and it is still a very reasonable time at around 4:00, 5:14, we're going to go ahead and move to our closing items. So I'm not opening section four. I'll be coming back to that. But we're going to go ahead and we're going to move ahead to section five, an item in particular, 501, our closing public comment.
Valerie Fianaca.
Welcome, Ms. Fianaca.
Hi. Valerie Fianaca, for the record. I wanted to thank all staff who have acknowledged the passing of the Fianaca family patriarch today, a truly great human being. Once the president of the Sparks Chamber or the Reno Chamber of Commerce. Your thoughts and acknowledgement are greatly appreciated. I do, I do love that. Some of you remember him. He's 90. He's been around a long time. I was at the commission meeting today when I was approached by one of the commissioners who asked me what I thought of the new superintendent. I was surprised when this question was posed, as I thought it had not been done yet. The commissioner said they'd heard it from Ms. Beth Smith, that they'd chosen a commissioner or a superintendent. However, it has been not done yet, as we've heard today, apparently, or else that was all just dog and pony. I'm not quite sure. We should have saved, if it's been chosen already, we should have saved $60,000 plus and used our in-house HR department for this choice. My second point, I'm wondering if the general public is aware that elected officials have a slush fund of $150,000 paid for by us, the constituents, to fight lawsuits or ethics complaints? The school district has seven staff lawyers, but has chosen to send McDonald Carano considerably more expensive than their in-house lawyers to represent them in court on a simple records case. Is this because they can't handle the case or because they don't have time for the Zoom hearing? Do they have so many lawsuits? They need outside counsel? No. It's pure intimidation. They count on most people backing down, but I'm not most people. And I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
Jason Walters.
Welcome, Mr. Walters. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm Jason Walters. I'm a parent at the Gerlach K-12 School. And I wanted to start by saying thank you. I've already heard that you're beginning to address our issue with housing. There are a couple more spaces and our teachers' housing for units. It would be extremely good if they had housing units in them. Our town is, in general, having an enormous problem with housing. We've spent years trying to figure out a way to deal with it. We haven't been very successful, and it really affects our ability to attract, to attract school staff at all, because there's nowhere for them to rent. So I really appreciate you guys paying attention to this issue. I know that Christie, the school secretary, was here last meeting, bringing it to your attention, and it's a very real thing, and it's kind of part of our community problem as a whole. Additionally, I'd like to draw your attention to this handout I've had given out to you. It is from a Canadian company called Fuse Battery Metals. They're an international mining corporation. They currently own, if you turn to the second page, the entire mineral rights to the southern tip of the Playa, which ends just north of the Gerlach K-12 School. And their proposal is to use geothermal mining to mine lithium upwind less than one mile from the Gerlach K-12 School. So what this in essence would mean, if you kind of flip to the back page, I've gotten a sample picture of what this would look like, is they would pump a lithium-infused brine out of the ground and put it in giant drying pools. It would be upwind of all of us, with the first stop being the Gerlach School. And since the wind is, I don't know, I've lived out there 18 years, 80% of the time, wind blows in that direction into the town, it would literally take powdered lithium in the air at the campus. Now, this hasn't been approved yet by the Bureau of Land Management. I called them, but if you look at last week's news, the Bureau of Land Management is streamlining their geothermal approval process. They don't explain in their press release why they're doing it. It's because of us, the town of Gerlach, not this project, but another project. The town of Gerlach is in federal court with them right now. So while this is on the table, they have the right to explore. They haven't done the filings to do it yet. The BLM is streamlining their environmental approval process as we speak, as of last week, with geothermal projects. So it would be, we'll be taking our own, you know, measures to send letters and be involved in this, but it'd be really helpful if the Washoe County School District was to send a letter to the Bureau of Land Management and this company, saying, hey, we're watching you. We've got a, we've got an eye on this whole thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to welcome Superintendent McNeil on that.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this forward to us. And just as you all had public speakers here at our last board meeting, you know, I know that this board takes this very, very seriously. So I will be taking this information. We do have an environmental officer with our school district. He works underneath Adam Sirci, our COO. So I'll bring this to his attention as well. We work very closely with our other government agencies, including the county and the cities, which I'm sure are pretty much involved with this. So I'll bring it, I'll bring it up to the county manager as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Roger Edwards.
Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Well, good evening. Roger Edwards, to the record. Been here many, many times before because I'm really concerned about our students. I'm 77 years old. I'm a 50-year resident of Washoe County. My kids, my kids' kids, all went to school in Washoe County. And, you know, you guys are huge, and I realize that you got to put roofs on schools and you got to put parking lots and you got to do all this new stuff they just talked about. Boggles my mind. I'm glad you got a whole crew doing it, but, you know, I went through this with all the little things added up, 11.11,617,000 plus in just this one agenda, not counting the big stuff they're talking about. And Trustee Westlake at least said, what the heck? And we waiting every seven years? Is that a good idea? I don't know how that works, but $11,617,000 in just this one agenda, eight pages, not one quality of education item in the full eight-page agenda. You know, they, in some parts of the world, they teach students out in the desert under a tree, and they don't have roofs or conditioners or anything else, but their focus, you know, I'm that focus guy, their focus is on education. And we have terrible numbers, you know? In the whole country, we have terrible numbers, and not one item on quality of education. Does it just go away if we don't put it in the agenda? I don't think so. I'm sure you don't think so either, but, and these guys will boggle your mind with just the number of new schools that are on the agenda. But we don't worry about the important stuff. Please, get back to focusing on what's important for the students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edwards.
Margaret Martini.
Welcome, Ms. Martini.
Thank you, and I kind of want to piggyback on what the previous speaker had said on, you had your discussion about allocations and the cost of adding teachers. Well, get rid of all the woke social programs. Focus on education. Pay those teachers to come in and teach these kids math and English and writing so that our scores, our national scores, will come up. You think that CRT is going to make our national scores in education come back? I don't think so. I think that our focus has gone awry, completely awry. And also, we have layer upon layer of administration. My suggestion would be cut the fluff programs, reduce the administration by 50%, and there will be plenty of per-student funding, plenty, a plethora. We can teach these kids one-to-one, maybe, if we get rid of all of this other peripherals that isn't, shouldn't even be in the school district. And then I'm looking at the superintendent, the five people that were chosen. Are they all eligible? I've looked at some of the parameters, and I'm thinking some of these may not be eligible. And I think also being within the school district, within the school district, or a local resident should not be a qualification to be considered at all. Residency and picking from within is not a qualification. A qualification is what's on the resume. Where's my master's degrees? Where's my education experience? Where's all of this? What I'm seeing is none of that. So I think that we need to go back to the drawing board on those candidates, and I understand that you have other candidates to pick from anyway. Although the, I'm just going to have to read this, although the previously chosen superintendents have been way less of qual, way less qualified than their compensation level, they're also chosen by the school board. So you guys don't have a good track record, not even you, but previous school boards, because there's no good parameters to choosing these superintendents. Our school, our academic standards, we would not be choosing from within the district for these, for the superintendent candidate, in my opinion. Parents are pulling their students for other choices for a reason.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martini. Also, just to clarify, there is an educational requirement of at least a master's, and the requirement is that they move here and have full residency for their household, not that they live here now. So what that meant was that they had to have their entire household move to Washoe County in the event that they are chosen. So it's not a requirement in order to apply, but it is a requirement for being in the role going forward. Thank you.
John Appolito.
Welcome, Mr. Welcome, Mr. Appolito. Third, third time's the charm. Welcome.
Now you know how it feels to get cut off, Beth. My name is John Appolito. I'm with Protect Nevada Children. One thing I'd like to mention is initial public comments. I don't know if that comes up with these superintendent candidates or not, but I really think that you guys should bring back initial public comments. People that have things to say or have a time for public comments. Not everybody can wait around three and a half hours to speak. Who waits around is the people you least want to hear from. The teachers aren't here, the students aren't here, the parents aren't here. You need to hear from the public. The way you guys are doing it now is not okay, most of us think. I would, thank you. The other thing, one of the candidates for superintendent, back in the summer of 2021, the candidate sat right here and gave you guys misinformation right before an important vote. It was about communities and schools. And he said that communities and schools does not maintain a database of the students they serve. A year later, we found out communities and school, and then you took a vote right after he gave you bad information, and he's done it before. That's the last person you want in that seat, in my opinion. A year later, you came up with communities and schools again, and it said right in the meeting materials or whatever it's called, that communities and schools does maintain a database on all the students. Plus, they have access to Infinite Campus, which I think is ridiculous, but that's another story. No accountability. As far as we know, nothing ever happened. I said communities and schools might maintain that database forever. He said, no, 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 they don't. Did you guys ever find out how long communities and schools maintains that database? And we've also asked, who else besides communities and schools has access to everything in Infinite Campus? You guys have never answered that question either. We're still waiting. Kristin, I really appreciate you looking at me. Thank you very much. That's much better than last time. We're getting something here, maybe. No, seriously, though, there's a lot of issues. I think I had one more thing, but that's what happens if I don't write it down. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Appolito.
Sandy Tibbet.
Welcome, Ms. Tibbet.
So no foreplay today, President Smith. It'll be a history lesson. So did you know the United States, in all caps, the United States, isn't a country but a corporation? For proof, you can look at subsections 15 and 15A in Title 28 U.S. Code, Section 3002, and you will see this sentence. "United States" means a, a federal corporation. The corporation was created for the District of Columbia, AKA Washington, D.C., which is a foreign territory, not a state, via the Act of 1871. via the Act of eighteen seventy-one. So the United States corporation operates under private international law with their own corporate constitution. What most people do not know about the United States, Inc., is that it is a foreign corporation, which means the politicians working in Washington, D.C., and nearly every politician, judge, attorney, police officer, and government agent, working throughout the USA and are foreign agents. If you voted for them, you have committed treason against the republic for the United States, and we are a republic, not a democracy. Nowhere in the Constitution does it say the word "democracy," or in the Bill of Rights. We're a republic. Maybe you missed that class. Were you absent that day? Did you know that statutes are not laws? Statutes are corporate policies. So let that sink in for a minute. So our government loves acronyms: FBI, CIA, FDA, WHO. All of those are federal corporations funded by taxpayers under the United States Corporation, all caps, United States. Did you know God, in the God we trust, that's displayed on our Federal Reserve notes, which is money, fake money? It's paper, Federal Reserve notes backed by paper bonds. God is an acronym for Government Ordnance Department. So when we say "in God we trust," we are actually saying "in government ordinance department we trust." Crazy, right? Now, did you know our country's financial system was designed to make Americans debt slaves to their own government? Americans' freedoms are an illusion. Our rights and our republic have been manipulated and destroyed by our government to make Americans think they are free. We must remove ourselves from their corporation before we will ever be free. Today, I accept your offer of your contract via your oath under commercial law. So we're gonna move this under the commerce side.
Thank you, Ms. Tibbet.
I'm also requesting the books be challenged and put on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Tibbet.
Stuart Hanty.
Welcome, Mr. Hanty.
Stuart Hanty, for the record, I was bore witness to last week's disgusting display of my friend being trespassed. So she did a history lesson. Let's do a legal lesson. Nevada revised statute forty-one point five one five regarding trespassing. Nevada law forty-one point five one five defines a trespasser as a person who enters the remains on the land owned, leased, or occupied by another person without the other person's express or implied consent. This is a public building. You people do not own this building. The public owns this building. The act of coming up to Ms. Tibbet and placing her, the officer's hands on her, is called assault and battery. Mr. Rodriguez, I'm sure you know about that. If I had children in this school right now, I'd pull them out. See in some of the books there, you people are responsible for this. Do you sleep well at night thinking about the disgusting verbiage contained in these books? My God, where is the logic in this? I continually hear day after day, at a small place that I work, about problems in the school system. Gangs, drugs, violence. It's gonna take another murder of a student for you people to do something? Come on. Colleen, when we went to Worcester, we had security guards. They were a joke, but we got along with them. Why? Because we treated teachers with respect. We treated others with respect. Unfortunately, that's gone, folks, now. We all know that. We've had to go to school police. I'm not disregarding them whatsoever. They have an important job. I was law enforcement. I was for thirty years, so I respect them. But don't respect is what took place last week. We all complicit in the commission of a crime. You all ought to be held accountable for Ms. Tibbet trying to educate you people on what should not be in these libraries. Again, I don't have a child in school, because I said I'd pull them out. I would. I would not let them go through this school system today. It sucks. It really does. And I'm sorry I used that verbiage, but we all know what's going on here. I worry about the kids. That's part of being a cop. These guys do. Do you need another incident that took place in North Valley High Schools to re-educate ourselves here? Do we really need something like that again, or do we need a gangland shooting inside a campus like Columbine to bring us back to reality? Come on, folks. Let's start thinking. You people are responsible for taking care of these kids. This is your responsibility. Primary, correct. Come on. Do we look ourselves in the mirror and say, "No, don't worry about it," or do we do something about it? So let's do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanty.
The board received an email from Erin Schurroyd.
All right. Well, thank you all so much. That closes item five point zero one. And now I will go back and open Section four, our reports. Our student representative was not able to be with us. So we will move on now to item four point zero two, our board reports. And we will go ahead and we will start with trustee Westlake.
Thank you, President Smith. So I got back being busy and going to my schools and seeing what they've got going on, activities and how iReady is improving in all of our schools. From the principals are really happy about the iReady. It's giving us a leg up. And the schools that I went to see was Sepulveda, Bud Beasley, Jerry Whitehead, Marvin Moss, went to AACT, which is amazing what is being done there in that school, the technology that's going on there, and then ACE, and got to see my friend Tony Clark and what they've been doing there with building and teaching these kids how construction. It's amazing. Virginia Palmer, Lena Juniper, and Florence Drake, Mendive Reed, Kate Smith, Dilworth, HUG, and then I got to go to Greenbrier with Superintendent McNeil, which was super fun. I love those little turtles. I attended literacy night at Marvin Moss and got to see the fun games. And what's so wonderful about that is the kids are playing games and they're actually, they're learning. They're, they don't realize that it's like a lesson. They think it's a game and fun, and it was just amazing. Went to the pinwheel planning celebration. Trustee Diane Nicolet was there, and that's to raise child abuse awareness. Just amazing what they have accomplished in being able to make it less traumatic for these children when they are, when they are, have the courage to come forward. It's, the support system is awesome there. The grandparent, the foster grandparent, again. Get out, get into these schools and volunteer. It's amazing when you touch a child and you're there for them and you touch their hearts and they know that you are going to be part of their life and you're part of their support. You get so much more out of it. It's just an amazing experience. I also was asked to be the keynote speaker for the Optimist Club of Reno. I was truly, truly honored. On that night, they gave out close to thirty thousand dollars in scholarships, recognizing student excellence. And just a little bit about the Optimist Club. They conduct over sixty-five thousand community service projects each year, spending over seventy-eight million in their communities. Annually, it is estimated over six million kids are positively affected by Optimist programs. So this is just another organization out there that is truly wanting to make a difference and wanting to support our kids, and I'm just really proud of our community. I'm super proud of our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, so some of my recent experiences, I did go to visit the Special Education Office for the entire school district. I was greeted by Huang Smith, and he gave me a tour of all the different offices. They have a lot of investment over there with their new furniture and remodeling, so they're very happy with their location. And I actually got to learn a lot, specifically to special education, as some of you saw earlier in the meeting, my discussions. I also had the opportunity to tour the Debbie Smith CTE Academy prior to it being opened here pretty soon, and then I also had the opportunity to follow up and do a Spanish interview to educate our Spanish-speaking population related to all the details and specifics of what we will be offering and when they can start enrolling, so that's great news. I've spoken so much about Debbie Smith that I actually caught myself recently when they told me it's not the Beth Smith School, it's the Debbie Smith School. So I had to make sure that I say Debbie Smith. But I also attended the Hot August Nights Foundation Gala Dinner. This foundation actually does a lot for our schools. Jesse Hall Elementary performed once again, as they did last year. I got to see them provide a twenty-seven thousand dollar check for the Katie Grace Foundation, which has given over six thousand free shoes to kids in our community, so that was a beautiful thing. And then lastly, I also visited with Mr. Modis at Rita Cannon Elementary, and that was a really, really good experience. I spent two hours there with the kids and answered a lot of questions related to the military, law enforcement, and the school district, so that was a lot of fun. Kids are very, very curious. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Woodley. All right, Clerk Rodriguez yields, and then I will go over to Vice President Mayberry.
Thank you so much. I was not prepared for this, so I was just, my memory was rushing here, so I jotted down some notes. I had an opportunity to spend some time with you, President Smith, for a women's in space program at UNR. Met Eileen Collins. She was the first female astronaut to pilot or command a shuttle, so it was a very inspiring evening. I've had a chance to visit Roger Corbe, Corbett Elementary. Yeah, I've been watching too much Stephen Corbe, so Roger Corbe is what I meant to say. Principal Melissa Chavez. And I also visited Smith Ridge Elementary with, passing the interim superintendent with Mike Dixon. Last week, it may have been this week, it must have been last week, because today's only Tuesday, but I had a chance to participate in a check presentation from Charles Rivers Laboratory. They gave Spanish Springs twelve thousand five hundred for their sports med program, and I believe they gave the same amount to another school today. In fact, I don't recall what school that was, but shout out to them. Had a chance to speak at the Innovative Leadership Institute. This is a group of Washoe County teachers. This is an opportunity that provides professional learning to teacher leaders around working with others and policy issues, so I was their guest speaker and very enlightening and appreciate the time. Also had an evening at Raw Elementary with myself and the principal. Joanna Ocoine, it's an opportunity sort of to have a forum with families specific to that school community, and that was a wonderful opportunity. And I will say this, too. One of my dreams came true as I was able to take flight on a C-130 a few weeks ago with trustee Diane Nicolet, and I'm so sorry she left because I wanted her to share her experience as well. Let's just say she needed a few a few air sick bags. Yeah. So I'm sure she's gonna get mad at me, but outside of that, it was a joyous trip. It was amazing. I wore my nineteen eighty-four leather jacket from Top Gun, so I felt pretty good that day. Anyways, thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna open us up with a huge congratulations to the Reno High School We the People team, who placed eighth in all of our nation for the We the People competition. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of teams across America compete. The best of the best go to DC, and we are so proud of them. And then also to Incline Village High School, who placed fourteenth in the nation. That is incredible. And so a few things that I'd like to share from recent times. I met with the founder of Courage Worldwide. They're a new organization here in town dedicated to supporting children who have been victims of sex trafficking. And so we always welcome new community organizations focused on healing and helping those. I was a guest lecturer at two TMCC early childhood education classes, which was absolutely fantastic. I'm so excited for the future pipeline of educators that we have coming through our community, being educated right here in the Trekkie Meadows. I also visited the site of the future Debbie Smith CTE Academy, which will be co-located with the Rise Academy of Adult Achievement, and I got to do that with trustee Woodley and trustee Nicolet as well. That school's gonna be really fantastic, and it's very, very thoughtfully created, so that's gonna be exciting. I visited North Valleys High School with Principal Macaluso, and I saw the classrooms of two of our own educators who are also assembly people, Napa Anderson and Selena LaRue Hatch, and so it was really wonderful to see them in their element as educators as well. And then the first picture that I have here, I attended the Council of Great City Schools Annual Policy and Legislative Conference in DC, and I advocated on behalf of the district with Senator Rosen's team as well. So that was just a truly outstanding conference, because when we look within what we can change versus the rules we have to follow, that's policy and that's law. So it was very, very enlightening. The second picture that we had is that the Milken Awards came back to the Washoe County School District, so you can see here an incredible celebration from Ms. Lopez at Alice Maxwell Elementary. She was awarded twenty-five thousand dollars, and she joins the Oscars of Educators across America, and now that's three educators that we've had just in the past year honored with that. The third picture follows on to Vice President Mayberry. This is our teacher Molly Hull. She received two thousand five hundred dollars as the Excellence in Aviation and STEM Education Award from the Guillermo Foundation in the Women in Space Program held at UNR, where we had the NASA astronaut also speak too, so we're just so proud of the educators we have. And then I'll end with participating in the roundtable from the U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona and Acting Secretary Labor Julie Su. There's a lot to celebrate here with the good work we're doing on a national stage. Thank you. All right, so that closes item four point zero two, and now we'll go to item four point zero three, our interim superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, President Smith. So I was able to attend the EDON Board Meeting, where there's always a great amount of support from all of our business partners out there for the school district. I attended a Student Advisory Council meeting at HUG High School, where we talked about what their projects are going to be for the Student Voice Symposium on May seventeenth, so I hope all of our trustees will be there. And when you get your doctorate, one of the things that they always ask for you to do is to give back to another doctoral candidate, and so I typically will sit on a dissertation committee, and so I'm super, super proud to say that Mr. Ryan Smith at Sun Valley Elementary School is now Dr. Smith. He is called Dr. Data as well. I also attended a really interesting kindergarten open house at Sarawina Mucka. The principal invites students that are not kindergartners yet, but will be next year, into the school. They spend a full day, and so it is kind of a wild, wild session there, but I really want to thank our teachers because they take on their regular kindergartners who are now veterans. And so our veteran kindergartners teach our little kinders, but it's a great, great idea, and so I asked her to share that with her colleagues. We had a fantastic strategic plan session that was developed by Joe Ernst and his teams, as well as Dr. Parks, talking about what we're going to be able to do and move forward with our strategic plans, so really putting, how I talked about it, the meat on the bones and the chicken in the bucket, so it was great. I was able to attend visits at Shaw Middle School, Spanish Springs High School, Greenbrier with our Turtles, and it was great to see the students and the staff when I was interim principal there last year. And then finally, I attended, I was asked to attend the Northern Nevada Council on Social Studies, and I sat on a panel with Principal Mike Dixon and a staff member of the NDE talking about the importance of civic education, so it was very
So it was very, very enlightening, and that's my report.
All right, I think everybody's gonna want an invite to that kindergarten, I mean, like, let's put that on the, we gotta track that. All right, that closes item 4.03 and section four in its entirety, so we will go back and reopen section five. We've already done public comment for 501, and that brings us to our next meeting announcement, and this is usually pretty basic, but we got some things to announce here. So our next regular meeting of the Washoe County School District's Board of Trustees is May 14, 2024. But I do want to also remind everyone that the community's opportunity to meet the superintendent candidates is this Thursday, April 25, at 5:00 p.m. at Worcester High School. And this Friday, we have a special meeting of the Board of Trustees to interview the finalists for the superintendent position, and that will be conducted on Friday, April 26, starting at 9:00 a.m. in this boardroom. So lots of exciting things coming up. All right, that closes item 4.02, and at 5:52 p.m., I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.